So I know you're looking at this, Mr. Chairman, and you go, oh, by the way, for the record, my name is John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46th East Street in East Wolf Boulevard, and I'm here representing Chris Prandret, who is sitting right there, who is the applicant. So I did, Chris and I worked together and did submit a plan today that meets what you had asked us to do at the last meeting, and that's this plan with the revision on it here. So we, Chris had us make the farmer's porch one foot narrower, so it's four feet rather than five feet, and the building one foot narrower, so it's 27 feet rather than 28 feet, and then we pushed everything three feet back. So the farmer's porch is at the same setback as the existing building. So that's what we did. The other thing I did, and don't get upset with me, but as I told you, when I submitted this plan for the building inspector, this plan, for the building inspector to sign, it's his opinion that it does not need a variance, that it's an extension of a nonconformity, and even though you're making the nonconformity closer, it's an extension of a nonconformity, and that it does not require a variance. And that's why I phrased the application the way I phrased it, that said, if needed, a variance. So my client would prefer to stick with this, but if the board feels that the building inspector is not correct, and I have the email from him if he need it, do you need it?
Oh, no, we have it already.
Okay. So then we're going, then we're prepared to go with the alternative plan that you had, so I'm going to leave it up to you.
So we've got a revised plan that no longer requires any questions of variance because it's built within the exist, the existing setback.
Correct.
So no variance is required, so it can be done under a special permit, and the reason for the special permit is it's an undersized lot and you're not increasing the nonconformity of it.
I did read the cases that the building inspector provided, and agree with the building inspector that variance is not necessary to build the original proposal. That case was decided earlier this year and did hold, as you say, that for a single family and two-family homes, you can extend a nonconformity, make it even more nonconforming, provided we pick a finding under Section 6, that is not substant, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So in my view, we should let them decide which one they'd like to proceed with and make the appropriate finding.
So, Mr. Chairman, we would like to proceed with the original plan as submitted, and the board makes a finding, no variance required, and that it's not more detrimental.
No, sorry. He just, they want to.
He would like, so, building inspector's opinion is that this originally submitted plan does not need a variance.
I agree. No.
This, this one does not need, this is obvious.
This, this second, the revised plan does not need a variance.
That's true.
What I'm, I don't remember if I was clear, but the, the cases that were, that the building inspector brought to our attention hold that the first plan also does not need a variance. All it needs is a finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And again, that was a 2019 case, so it's fairly recent. Typically, if it's a commercial building or it's not a single or two-family, then you would also give you Section 6 finding and you need a variance if you're making it more nonconforming. But there, according to that case, there's an exception for single or two-family homes, so the way that I read it anyway, that I don't require a variance, we have the first option. But they do require it, but I don't think you'll need a Section 6 finding for the second proposal, but you would for the first.
So, and I'd be concerned about the Section 6 finding based on the density of the neighborhood and the other small lots, undersized lots, and what could happen in the future. I'm, I'm in favor of the revised proposal, that's what they came in with. I, I think that they've demonstrated they can work with that. But the, the first one, if you, if you look at it, it is...
Five feet closer.
Five, right, five feet closer.
Can I speak up?
Sure.
Chris Prandret, applicant. Yeah, I very much prefer to go with the first option, just work really hard with the architect to do a lot of stuff that, you know, window and door placement and everything to go back. It would, it would really, you know, take a lot of time and money to make those revisions. So if it's only a special permit, is how we, we may do it, then it, it makes a really, really big difference in our lives. That's it.
Well, could you just speak briefly to the, the standard of nonsubstantially more detrimental, although we talked a little bit about last time, but could you just describe the adjacent buildings, how, how you see it satisfying?
Yeah, so, two things. The, the adjacent building to the rear where we're pushing it closer is actually closer to the lot line than the zoning bylaw allows. And that building is actually built under the same section where the, he received a special permit to expand his building, but not make it nonconforming in the sense where, where, where it wasn't nonconforming. So there was a garage there before, and now there's a garage there now. So the, the house across the street, we still have the 40-foot wide street and the setback to that house, so we're not really encroaching on that house's space over here. So if you look at it as far as providing, you know, air and light and that sort of stuff, I think we're better moving it, you know, having that five feet go to the front rather than our three feet to the rear. So that was the whole idea of sort of having it there. As far as detrimental, sometimes when we're going towards the street, we're looking at site distance for cars and that sort of stuff. And as we said, this part of McKinley Ave. is really a driveway to the abutter who is here, who was here at the last meeting. And the other thing about this is that if we say that this is our frontage, this house could actually be turned and only be 15 feet from the street in accordance with the zoning bylaw because, and this is an odd lot, because it says that when you're on a corner lot, you can choose your frontage based on your address. Well, here, it's McKinley and it's McKinley, so it's kind of a weird lot in that sense. But he could, I believe, turn this house this way, it was one of the options I showed to him when he first came into my office many months ago, and only be 15 feet from the street and 30 feet back from this part of McKinley Ave. So as far as being detrimental, I don't think it's more detrimental. I think he's actually been very reasonable by staying back the, I think it's 20, it's 20.63 feet to the, to the porch.
What are the setbacks along McKinley as you go up the street?
So it's Residence B zoning, so it's 30 feet in the front, 30 feet in the rear, and 15 feet on the sides.
And do they comply for the rest?
Most of the houses comply, because most of the houses are, you know, were built since the 1980s. There are other houses, what Mrs. Woods here has, and I think some of these ones on the other part of McKinley and this one here, because of their proximity to the pond, they were built quite a while ago. This one was rebuilt, in fact, they were all rebuilt, I think, over the last 15 or 20 years. But most of those buildings are nonconforming, and clearly this building's nonconforming from this point.
Can I add one more question? Also, you know, went around the neighborhood and got all signatures for, you know, their approval to it. I think you already had that, but I kind of want to add that. Cam, done?
Sorry, yes. The neighborhood's dense as it is, and we need to, if you're extending things beyond, it's like, it was only one, and the day was very dense as it is, so I think the revised plan, that's it.
Rick, any thoughts?
Well, I actually don't have a problem with the original plan, based on the building inspector's comments, you know. So I agree with John, it's kind of an odd neighborhood, he might be able to flip the house around and have it closer to the passage portion of McKinley rather than the driveway portion, so. And since the applicant prefers it, I really don't see a detriment to it.
True.
Ah, no comments at this time.
After the, you know, looking at the case history with the town, ah, not town council, the building inspector provided us, I, I do, I understand those, those cases, and I think if, if it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, and I think, you know, you've pointed out that it's, fits the character. After hearing that and looking at the plans and considering he could turn it sideways, and I don't think anybody wants that.
No.
You know, what's, what's the best, I don't think it's, I don't like it, but I also don't think that it's particularly asking for, asking for a special permit, not a variance, it doesn't rise to the level of a, of a variance, so.
I'm actually okay with it.
And I think the comments from the abutters and the people who gave their support of the project provides me some comfort in the way that they're okay with their own neighborhood.
Well, yeah, I must feel that I would be more comfortable with the revised plan, however.
I, I too, but they've...
Yeah, the reality is, yes, I think it's okay.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the audience that want to, wants to comment on 13 McKinley? Okay, do you want to close the hearing?
Yes, we'd like you to close.
Okay. This is just to close the hearing, but I have a motion to close the hearing.
Some moved.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Suzanne. This is just to close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, staying, so carried. Okay, the hearing is closed. And so let's reference the original plan. Original plan as shown, this is the 13 McKinley Avenue. And this is for a special permit because lot size, because of lot size and frontage too, are you looking for frontage on this? I think I can tell you right there.
I don't think so.
No, so it's just, it's just lot size. And, and tear down the existing structure and rebuild as shown on the plan date in March 1st, 2019.
Okay.
How have you done that in the past?
Can you, can you withdraw your questions?
It's worded, it has needed, so.
I've worded it if needed, a finding or just say that it's not.
Good job.
Finally learned it, actually.
I learned it.
Okay. Anything, anything else on this? Any of the standard conditions? And then, but...
I think they, in a similar situation, we had a condition, construction permits with an underscore, makes sense they're knocking down the building. I think it's two years on the bylaw, but they had, before it's considered banned, but to the extent we want to have construction permits.
One, yeah. You'll, you'll have this dotted within one year, right?
Better.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
With the removable, removal of the building and then with one, within one year, but that's just to protect the town.
I don't want that worded.
Same with, where we've worded it with the other decision.
Construction another year.
Any, any questions on that? Okay. Okay, this is to vote, and voting on this will be Rick, Jane, Suzanne, me, and Bob. Could I have a motion to approve case number 0719 as just described? Moved by Rick, seconded by Bob. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, I'm saying so carried, okay.
Hey, you as chairman, thank you.
Okay, good night, everyone. Okay. Next, we have the 40B Berns Ave., case number 0519. As you guys have your folders. So what we want to discuss tonight is, we want to talk about the peer review for, Beta did the, the peer review on engineering and stormwater, so that's what we're going to discuss, discuss tonight. And if the neighbors have anything else that they want to bring up, that's, they can bring that up too. But the, to move this along, we're trying to focus in on that. And we also, should, we have our consultants with us, who's, can you just explain your, your role for...
Sure, sure. My, my job is to consult and answer any questions that the board may have about the comprehensive permit process in general, or about this specific project and how we can implement conditions, how we can view different concessions or different issues that arise during the process. To admit that we're kind of coming into this blindly, we haven't had the opportunity to review the application. On the other hand, if there, there might be questions that are technical that I might not have the answers to you tonight, but I take good notes and, you know, we'll review and have answers for you guys next time that we meet.
And just so everybody understands, your pay, Mass Housing partnership gave, gave the town the grant to have you here assisting the zoning board of appeals.
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
Thank you for being here. Okay. To the applicant.
Ah, yes, good night, good evening. Lou Patroso here for Wall Street Development Corp. And at the last meeting, we did receive, we had received comments from the peer review, Beta, and since that meeting, we did provide a, with respect to the comments provided by Beta on transportation, on traffic, we did submit a rebuttal response, and I have, if, if the board is interested, we do have a traffic consultant here tonight to just talk briefly about those items, and then I guess we can get into the remaining Beta comments related to engineering and other details that if, what's proposed.
Okay. So, yeah, we, it's, why don't we start with, you want to address traffic?
Yeah, I think that would probably be good.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Bill Scully with Green International Technologies. We did the traffic study for the project. At the last hearing, we presented the traffic analysis results in some detail, and had at that point also addressed comments from the town staff, mostly the town engineer. Since that meeting, we reviewed Beta's peer review comments and addressed them in a June 10 memo, which I presume you have copies of. In general, the comments were relatively minor. We made, addressed the comments, Mando made some of the corrections, and the report, some of it was editing. And any analysis that was updated did not change any of the findings or the conclusions from the original report. Several of the comments related to mitigation, including to clarify the commitment on behalf of the applicant. So that's really what I'm going to do tonight. I brought a board down just to summarize and have copies for board members, so you can actually see it. So some of this was in the original traffic report, and also at the last meeting, there was a commitment to construct a sidewalk internal in the site connecting to the existing Berns Ave. sidewalk. And also, so some of the things I repeat aren't going to be new. And all of the things that are here are committed by the applicant to, to install and construct. So we have, at the intersection of Union Street and Pleasant, upgrading the existing, it's an always stop right now, it has static stop signs on all approaches. What we've committed to doing is upgrading each of those signs with LED, lights on them that flash and highlight the stop, to try to get, you know, motorists complying with the stop better, as well seeing it from further away. We're also installing some static signs on Pleasant Street in the northbound direction approaching the Berns Ave. area of a thickly settled, reminding people of 30 mile per hour, a thickly settled speed. Doing the same thing north of Union Street, but going in the southbound direction. And again, it's just to try to encourage motorists to slow down as they're either approaching the, the stop control at this intersection or just driving through the neighborhood. Also, we've got stop control and a crosswalk on Berns Ave. at Pleasant Street, and there's an existing sidewalk along Pleasant, and it does not have handicap ramps at Berns, so we will reconstruct that area around the crossing and make sure they're ADA compliant ramps with detector panels. And I think I covered all the actions. So, and, and those are outlined in the, in the report or the meeting minutes from the last hearing, and on that, that graphic representation that I just distributed. Okay? Thank you.
Any questions on traffic from zoning board members?
So, just looking at comment T3, it had to do with the crash rates at certain intersections. And Beta's comment had recommended that RSA meeting be scheduled to evaluate that information. Your response was that that is not standard procedure for development of this size. Could you just explain what the RSA meeting is, and why this particular development need not go through that process?
Well, RSA is road safety audit. Road safety audit is an exercise where a group of us will be, will go out and look at the intersection, will look at the data that we presented to you, and try to identify, and when I say a group of people, it'd be town engineer, safety officer, public works, us, we go out to the intersection, we take a look and go, oh, yeah, okay, so maybe you can't see that stop sign good, or maybe the traffic is approaching the intersection a little higher than, higher speed than we want to. What, what can we do to try to address those issues and alleviate that, that issue or concern? And essentially, that's what we've done at this intersection, probably for the last two years. So when we looked at the intersection, we knew, as we were developing the original scope of work, prior to this report, we had input from the town engineer and the safety officer in terms of any issues or concerns that, that looked. And we went out and collected the data, we assessed it, and committed to certain actions. So doing a road safety audit would lead us where we are right now. And the only thing I would say to the peer reviewer is if, if the, you know, if the peer reviewer had other suggestions or disagreed with what we're suggesting, then bring them forward, but we haven't, we didn't see disagreement with what we had or any other suggestions. So we wouldn't be any, any, in a, in a different spot than we are today with a road safety audit. So spending another $5,000 or $10,000 to do what we've done, I'd rather put the money into putting things in place.
When, when did you meet with Maggie and the safety officer?
I mean, we've...
This is for the other project?
Yeah, yeah, probably. I mean, I've talked to Maggie over...
But on this, on traffic?
Well, in this one, we presented the report, I think we verified, I'd have to go through my notes to see if, we may not have recontacted the safety officer if we talked to him 12 months ago.
On the 40B project.
Yeah, I'd have to look at what else. But on, with Maggie, we had her comments, so we addressed her comments prior to the last meeting.
Anything else on that? One other question. The, we talked about this briefly at the prior meeting, but the, the field evaluation that you conducted was dated October 17th, 2016. This is on page three of your response at the top. To do this, the, basically the...
Oh, that was in, so we had, I think the report had said something that we had noted, certain things in a, in a field visit, and Beta asked us for that information, which was one of the attachments. So in that particular statement, that was October 16th.
Right, right. So my, so my question is, I don't think they really raised this, but how confident are you that that 2016 in traffic information, conditions today, basically two year, three year, almost three years later?
So we went back, we were back out there during this updated study, you know, to, to verify or check field conditions, which stayed essentially the same. The conditions that, that were talked about at that point was the PMP tower, people using Pleasant Street coming southbound from Route 1, you know, it's kind of the back home commute, there's a long queue. And so in our initial, initial observation, we just noted that there was a long queue in the PMP tower coming into the stop sign. I think it hasn't changed much. This project isn't going to change it at all. So I guess the short answer is I'm pretty confident that everything is...
What was the date of the date, the, the time you went out, the second after this date?
I would have, I'd have to look it up, but the date on the report is February 17th... I would have, I'd have to look it up, but, uh, the date on the report is February twenty nineteen, so it was probably late fall of twenty eighteen, you know, an engineer might have gone out to-
So, but it's in, it's in that report, whatever the date is based on, it's in-
You know, we're, yeah, I don't, it may be in the report in terms of, uh, the specific date, um, it may have been, at this point, this is the third or fourth time we've looked at the site, so that it may have been a fairly quick drive-through, um, you know, just checking what we knew from before to see if anything really had changed, so, I don't know if there's a lot of detail in terms of the last time that we were down here. I've been down here several times, sometimes I hang out at Panera across the street, drive through the area just to see what's going on.
Anything else on traffic?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, yes, so I'll-
R.J. Campbell, fifty-year resident of Burns Ave, when's the last time you were in the field out there, sir, with your crew?
Last year, last-
Last year?
In the field of what?
You said you've been over there studying traffic recently, I want to know when.
Okay, everything comes to the board.
Well, alright.
So, you're asking the board-
Yeah, when's the last time he was there out in the field, as he puts a study in traffic?
Yeah, when you, when were you last out there looking at the traffic?
Well, this is, the report's dated February twenty nineteen, I, I was probably over there myself sometime in twenty eighteen a few times, I might have come through here again, prior to the first hearing of this project, uh, I don't have, I don't have a complete set.
I'm not, I'm, obviously you're not aware-
I've been, I've been down there-
That he's obviously not aware that them stop signs for at least ten weeks have been lit up and flashing, and from personal experience, they do not work, I almost got nailed there this morning by some woman on her cellphone, seems to me we should deal with more current and reliable information, thank you.
So, your point is, the traffic signs at, where they just proposed putting LED lights-
The LED lights have been there for about two months, over two months.
Right, at the intersection of Union and Pleasant?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're not working, because I almost got nailed this morning, some woman's standing on the line on her cellphone, I drive that intersection every day, and I think we should have some more current information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
All I can say is they took out a recommendation, I'm not sure if you put it in, if this police department wanted to do the job.
Anybody else on, on traffic? Other people had their hands up, but was it all about those, the LED signs?
Yeah, um, and what, what's the outcome with the sidewalks, sorry, Liz Barrows, twenty ninety-nine Union Street, um, hey?
As far as sidewalks?
There was, um, made recommendations that, um, sidewalks going from Pleasant down Burns, um, is not happening, or?
No, that's, that's one of the conditions that the zoning board could put on, that they-
Could put on it, but they, um, the response from the applicant has not been that that's one of the things he's willing to do, or?
The que, the question, Mr. Chairman, uh, the question I, I recall that came up at the last hearing was, um, should the project itself have a sidewalk, um, and the applicant committed to putting in a sidewalk internal, and then that would connect with the sidewalk out on Burns Ave, and then we're fixing at the end of Burns Ave at Pleasant Street, uh, constructing handicap accessible ramps.
Okay, so-
So, within the project?
Within the project, but, um, one of the things that the zoning board can put on as a condition on, on something like this, and, you know, the applicant can appeal, there's a whole appeal process for this, but, you know, um, you know, if it's going to improve safety for the, the project, the zoning board can put on a condition saying that, you know, uh, update the sidewalks on, um, Burns Ave.
Bill, question, how are the sidewalks on Burns, are they in decent shape?
Um, I, I don't have any, I don't have any, so that's what I want.
Yeah, no, we were just, he was asking if they were ADA compliant.
Yeah.
Which I doubt they are.
Well, there's no, uh-
There's no ramp.
There's no ramp up and down, and at Pleasant's where the crossing would be, that would have to be ADA compliant.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, so now what I'd like to do is move on to, uh, the engineering peer review, uh, we have, uh, from Beta, uh, if you would just introduce yourself for everybody and explain what you looked at as far as the peer review, and we'll go from there.
Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Phil Paradis with Beta Group, I was hired, uh, by the town to, uh, do a, an engineering peer review of, of various aspects of the project, um, and we've been, we've started, uh, at conservation, uh, we've done, uh, we've completed a, a review of the initial submission, uh, for stormwater management, as well as wetland impacts, uh, subsequent to that, we've received a revised, uh, design calculations and, uh, response to our comments, addressing the majority of the, of the comments relative to stormwater management, um, there's a few that were outstanding, uh, one in which, uh, the, uh, agent correctly identified the fact that the wetland, uh, infiltration basins need to be at least fifty feet from wetlands, so, there will be a, a design requirement, uh, a change requirement for that, um, and there's a few other details relative to, uh, providing, uh, recommended conditions relative to providing, uh, a final stormwater pollution prevention plan and O and N, O and N plan. Relative to the, the design itself, we've, um, the initial submission had a significant number of waiver requests, uh, which is, um, which is, uh, waiver requests are kind of, of, uh, part of, part of the, uh, forty B requirement, in order to get the, the density of, of, of buildings, they typically need to be waived with additional requirements of your zoning, as well as other aspects of, of the town regulations, however, I think we want to identify which ones are really required to meet, to make the, uh, project economic, and which are not, um, and so that's, that's a lot, a significant number of them may not be necessary, we would also, we want to calibrate, for instance, uh, the zoning compliance, how far are they off relative to certain aspects, uh, again, we would expect that, uh, waivers would, would be required, but, um, but how, how many, and how, and so we didn't, we didn't comment a lot, on a lot of those, we were just, um, and, and in kind of requesting a waiver for a whole section, like the whole stormwater management plan, uh, regulations, or, uh, other regulations, as opposed to specific, uh, requirements within, so, so that we could just have a better understanding how, how this complies or doesn't comply with the local regulations, so.
Okay, would you address that?
I, I think that that's a good idea, typically, uh, I think this is our third or fourth meeting, and there's been some, I'm assuming some changes to the original plans, um, there's that-
Actually, just so we're clear, we're still, the zoning board is still working off the original plan you submitted.
Correct. Okay, which is fine.
Well, uh, should we expect some revisions coming?
I, I think revised plans have been submitted to the Conservation Commission, and we're in the process of, uh, reviewing those, we have another hearing scheduled next week, once we've got that, um, those wetland and, and stormwater management issues resolved to Beta's satisfaction, then we will submit a revised set of plans incorporated, the discussion that we're having tonight relative to the waivers, uh, and other things that traffic has, traffic consultant has suggested that be incorporated, so there will be a revision, um, depending on what round next we move to, when we have, uh, some feedback in the commission.
And it, yeah, and it would be encouraged that the applicant be as specific as possible as far as exactly what waivers, um, they're getting, sometimes the initial application, it might be general or complete waivers from entire sections, uh, but they really should be, be specific about why they require the waiver, um, relative to the existing plan.
Thank you.
So, also, I just want to comment the fact that Beta was not involved in previous, uh, design reviews or reviews of the site, uh, subsequent to that, we are different, have a different opinion of wetland impacts and associated, so, uh, so those are the things I think are going to be discussed at the next, uh, Conservation Commission, I don't necessarily want to bring them up until they, they've come, come to their own, uh, conclusions, so, until next time. So, the project proposes a density that, uh, is in excess of, of what the zoning requires, they're, they're, uh, putting thirty-six units on a three-point-two acre lot, puts you at about, uh, three, thirty-nine hundred, uh, square feet of lot, land area for, for a, a unit, where the, the, uh, requirements are ten thousand square feet through, uh, housing unit, but that's, that's to be expected, I just wanted to let you know that that's, uh, that's the density that they're, they're showing now, uh, we, again, uh, relative to zoning, we, we would, we'd like to see a zoning table showing, you know, what's for, what's required for zoning and how close they get into it, so we can, again, just have that, uh, access, um, access to the site, um, Burns Ave is a, is a dead-end street, they are proposing to lengthen a dead-end street, which will be in excess of seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, which is, uh, a local requirement, uh, they are putting a, a number of, uh, residential units on the, on the, on the far end of that, so that's, that may be a, a fairly significant safety issue, uh, the, the plans did not clearly identify the fact that, if, if they're going to have an emergency access, um, or not, uh, there's been some, some discussion of, um, maybe that's going to take place, but the plans didn't-
But right now, and again, working off the plan that you had and that we had before, there is no emergency access.
Correct. So, uh, relative to parking, uh, there's going to be, uh, garages, there's going to be driveways, however, there's no provision, as far as I can see, relative to visitor parking, so the visitor parking, due to the narrowness of, of, of the road, will, may have to be blocking traffic or, or, I mean, it's, they're proposing a twenty-four foot wide road, uh, the driveways take up a substantial portion, if you see them all lined up together, there's, there's very little opportunity to park between the driveways, uh, so we would, we would want the applicant to consider providing, uh, visitor parking spaces interspersed. There was little information relative to building height, uh, elevations, uh, which is required, uh, there was no information on signage, uh, solid waste, uh, handling, um, and most significantly, I think, uh, landscaping plan was not provided, uh, there are a number of, of homes within close proximity, uh, we would also not, not include it in my comments, but I, I think it would be a good idea for the applicant on the next set of plans to include any homes within a hundred feet of the property, just to, just to be able to identify, uh, potential impacts, vi- visual impacts, uh, for the property. We recommend, uh, um, and also there was no lighting plan or, uh, discussion on, on lighting, so we would expect that, uh, the roadway, we would expect to be constructed to town standards, um, and just note that as, as, as we discuss waivers, um, the traffic, um, as was discussed, um, we, again, we weren't, we weren't privy to the, any, any, uh, discussions in terms of impacts and, and, and studies that were done, um, for previous projects for this area, however, I, I would recommend that we, we do have either those, your, uh, safety, um, safety consult, or safety officer and town engineer confirm that the number of, of, of mitigation aspects are, are appropriate, and/or, it, it may be appropriate to fund a, a road, road safety audit, just to be, um, just to document everything, just, just due to the number of accidents. And the project is proposing, uh, utility connections to the, uh, Union Street, um, so we would expect, uh, some information from, um, EPW, the water department, saying that there's adequate, adequate capacity there, um, and then, again, some other details relative to showing service connections, so, those are my comments right now.
Did you deal with any, uh, snow removal?
Uh, we did, we did not, um-
That's one we always usually deal with.
Yeah, 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 it's a good one.
Is it on the plane, is there a snow removal?
I, I can't recall, I don't think there's anything on it.
I don't think so. I've seen.
So, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
I do have a, just, uh, I have one question, and you provided a lot of, uh, good information, you mentioned, um, road built to town standard, is, um, is this going to be, is this roadway going to be accepted by, by the town, or why do you recommend it being built to town standard?
Just that question.
Well, I'll answer the question, you know, it's, it's going to be, uh, a private driveway, essentially, but it will be constructed according to subdivision standards relative to, uh, roadway construction, the same, same standards.
But you're not looking to have this accepted as a town road at some point?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's really not considered an extension of Burns Avenue, it's really a private driveway, um, that's, um, going to be separately maintained by a homeowners' association.
Okay. Okay, uh, board members, any other questions?
Yeah, I have, Phil, um, you got a revised drainage report?
We did.
Yes, I saw your comments on it, did the size of the basin or anything change significantly?
No, uh, I don't believe it did, um-
Okay.
Not to my visual.
Okay, uh, the other comment I wanted to make was, some of the responses from JLM were, that the, the town stormwater regulations don't apply, because they normally don't, uh, but in the, um, letter from Mass Housing, it specifically says that because the site is sensitive, um, it should include requirement, it should meet the requirements of local and state regulations, including stormwater, so I think if you, if you're trying to say we don't have to provide that, I think you can probably say you do.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, I would just, uh, agree with your comment about more specificity being required so we can evaluate the scope of the waivers that were being asked to pass on, um, you know, some of the, we'll need justification for determining, you know, whether a particular waiver is appropriate for safety reasons, or whether it truly makes the project uneconomic, and so the more detailed we have on that, uh, the better, the better session will be able to be, and it might, might be appropriate actually to have, you know, a session on the waivers, because they're very sensitive.
Whole session.
Some, strike means very-
Our next meeting. Yeah.
Or whenever, maybe it's more appropriate when the plans are updated, because-
Yeah, we need the Musa plan.
Yeah, we do need a Musa plan, so.
They have a chart, they have a chart, I believe that'll be provided, put on the left column, and then, the extent is needed, the reason why, you know, typically is on a chart, so, I think we'll find that after the update.
Okay, and that's something that you're seeing that's normal and important.
We love charts. Makes things easier to be able to figure it out, um, so, I, I think at this point, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a meeting to address the waivers quite yet, doesn't look like we're- Doesn't look like we're there yet.
No, 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 he's just saying eventually.
But I think at this point, we can ask them to start clarifying the waivers, so that it can be properly reviewed by our peer reviewers.
Jane, Drew, any comments?
Yeah. About public comments, does anybody have anything to say on this? Okay, yes, this is Vera's.
Thank you. It was alluded that a subsequent plan was going to be submitted after issues with conservation worked themselves out. Will our peer review then review that next plan and then also come back in here to discuss the new plan? Okay, thank you.
And, and those, once those plans are submitted to the zoning board, the public will have access to them also. Yes, sir?
Robert O'Leary, Precinct Three. I'm not in a butter, quite a ways away. I got involved with this because I went to the first meeting for sixty-four A. And when I was handed information showing ownership, I got involved. I got the Rackman, sorry, Bruce report a couple of days ago. So I've been working on it based on information that I've accumulated. I haven't really gone through the whole thing, because I haven't had time, but I've addressed it to a point where I think there's substance to my letter. So I think I'd like to present it even unfinished. I could talk about it, but it's quite long. It basically, I had trouble looking at it, because it reminded me of another report I saw that was quite lengthy, that had so much information in it that you lose sight of what is important. And usually, it's cleared up by town council. So I had trouble going through it, because I thought so much that had already been talked about and presented, and really wasn't relevant. So I kind of picked out some things that I thought were relevant. And one thing was, mentioned long ago, that the carved deed actually shows it stopped short. The property we're discussing right here tonight stopped short of the Burns Ave. I mean, it doesn't touch it, it says it right in their own deed. So I just wanted to point that one thing out.
I think that's, if you have something you want to submit to the board.
So, there's a lot more I can do, but right now, I think I'm going to submit five pages and as many associate documents that I had within it, listed within it. Just provide that all, if I can do that.
Sure. No, we've been having, and, you know, this is something that's being reviewed by town council, and the site access is still not cleared up. Do you want to address?
Well, yeah, there, by the way, good evening, Mr. Chairman. We're going to board George Pucci from Tom Council's office. Yeah, there was, we had had a Tom Council review of the letter from Rackman, and I agree, there was a lot in that letter that really wasn't to the point that our review thought was relevant. She commented on that, and then there was quite a bit of additional, not additional, but presentations made by the lady in the back there. I apologize, Mrs. Campbell. And then we received additional information that had apparently been previously submitted, but we're still looking at that. We have, you know, we take an approach with these, we have a real estate contact that is reviewing that within her area expertise, so she'll be commenting back on that original submission, but needs more time to look through it. So she'll be having to look at any additional stuff as well.
Because that's something that, you know, we, clearly, these are issues the neighbors have brought up with town council. With, you're concerned about it, the board's concerned about it.
Yeah, I mean, and that, you know, an access issue is obviously irrelevant to you, that you don't want to, you know, if you thought that there was a real, you know, viable basis that that access issue could be challenged, that's obviously irrelevant. Why would you go forward to the full-blown hearing if you have real access issues? Preliminary, though, I should say, you know, our review of the real estate issues was in line with what the applicant had submitted. And, you know, the applicant's choosing not to respond to this additional information that's been submitted, so we'll look at and comment on it, but there's a lot of material in there, and Sharon Everett dealt with this very thoroughly, so she'll look at everything, but she just won't need more time on that.
So, Mr. O'Leary, if you want, you can submit that to the board, and we'll pass that on to town council for a review of your comments specifically on the site access questions.
I have only two copies. Should I present them both to you, so?
No.
Alternatives of one or another, because I really only have one of everything.
Yeah, well, why don't you, we don't want deal of final copies, so, and it doesn't have to be presented tonight, you can drop it off at the office at any point. Thank you.
Just on the, just on that point, you're obviously capable hands with Attorney Pucci as far as figuring out the title rights. But as far as consideration as a forty-B application, it really shouldn't be something that the board considers, because it's a private interest right that's up to the applicant to figure out. If he doesn't own that property, then that's his problem. So it shouldn't be part of the consideration of whether to approve this application at the same time you're in capable hands of Attorney Pucci making that determination for you.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I understand exactly what you said.
Doesn't make sense.
But would that be a concern for the town to approve something that the applicant does not have access to?
It's a difficult question. I think, I think no. I think, you know, it's their property, and they claim that they own it. It's a private property interest right. It's not really in the purview. I think that it's worth investigating as a report, but if there isn't a determination whether he owns the property or not, it shouldn't be part of a consideration whether to approve or deny.
Okay. And you, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, in a typical zoning matter, though, you would either have to own the property or have some beneficial interest in order to submit an application, or the approval of the person who does own the property. So, all right, those rules don't apply in a forty-B contest?
Well, 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 it's, I mean, it's his, it's his application. It really isn't in the, it's not really the board's decision to determine whether somebody owns something or not. If he's making, yeah, if he's making the claim that he does, I'm assuming they've done a title report, and they are saying they own the property.
It's access.
If somebody, if somebody says, hey, you're going over my property, you don't have access to that, that might be a private claim. But I don't think that it should be part of the consideration as far as the board, you know, if we get down to the end of it, and there's a dispute about whether he owns the property or not, saying, well, you know, we don't feel comfortable approving this, because we don't think he owns his property. If there's a dispute, and they bring, you know, evidence to say that they do.
And it's, just so we're clear, it's not a question on this, the property that you see here, where the proposed comprehensive permit project would go, that's not, we understand that he owns it or has agreements to purchase possibly. It's the access on Burns Ave, the access into the site.
So getting into the interest, there's private interest rights in the private way.
Yes.
Again, I think that that's a private, you know, title interest right that shouldn't be part of the board's consideration.
It's, you know, it's something, I don't disagree with what Paul's saying in terms of jurisdiction, and it would certainly be an appealable issue where you'd ultimately deny based on the access issue, but it's certainly of relevance to your consideration. You have people coming in and questioning it. I would tend to agree in this, the way you've conducted the hearing, that you're focusing on the issues within your jurisdiction, but it's certainly relevant to you to get more clarity on the issue to the extent that you can.
Can it be part of a condition?
Well, it is. He has to own the property in order to do this.
Right.
But I don't think it's, it's.
It's ZBA's decision.
Right.
Depending on what happens, too, with the review, you can deal with that, that, you know, again, I tend to agree, the focus of your hearing should be, you know, seeing if you can approve this project with conditions, what waiver should be granted, all the issues within your jurisdiction. You must certainly, you know, review of that issue as in holding it up. It's of relevance to you, it's of relevance to people coming in, commenting on the project. So I definitely think it's within your purview, and it's appropriate for you to. You could very well, in your discretion, say, we don't need a review of this. Tom Council, we're not asking you to review this. That would also, that would certainly be appropriate for you to be looking for an opinion on it.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Campbell?
Thank you. I actually have two packets of information. Jack Conroy asked me to submit this on his behalf. This was something that he submitted on March sixth to the board regarding overburdening of easement, and he was expecting a response from town council, so he just wanted me to submit that again and make sure that that is part of the submission. And, Mr. Chairman, may I, will Miss Alfrin get copies of everything that's been submitted, or just the applicant's?
I think it's going to be all.
Yep, we hope so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, on Captain Campbell, thirty-five, Burns Ave, and Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. Just a quick, I believe that back in March, when I did, I leave it up to the attorneys, but when I did place a call to Mass Housing and spoke to Michael Busby, he said absolutely the access into the property, I had sent him our survey that we had done, and he said that access into the property was absolutely under the ZBA's authority and jurisdiction, and ensuring that not only the property and access into and out of was fully under the applicant's control. So I'm just, I'm concerned about where this is heading, but I will present to this board tonight a little bit more information, and I'm sorry that Sharon's going to get some more information. But I would just like to, speaking about the piece of property that's owned by the Campbells, I've given you a plan that's outlined in red. I think pieces of information may have been omitted. Guido De Lutis owned lots A, B, and C. He built forty-eight Burns Ave on lots A and B, subsequently sold them, and ending up in Bill Felton's property. But for about twenty-two years, Guido De Lutis drove down Burns Ave, drove down the twenty-foot wide strip of land over the fifteen-foot gap into his existing home that existed on Lot A and B. When he sold lots A and B, he kept Lot C, as outlined in red. That property, as you can see by the red arrows, had the same exact access from that lot to the unapproved portion of Burns Ave, and then accessing the approved portion of Burns Ave, the same way he had driven down that street for twenty-two years. I believe the comments were that when Clarence sold the B two property, the assumption was that Guido De Lutis would drive over Clarence Campbell's property. This twenty-by-one-hundred piece of property was sold between two friends. We have no idea why it was sold, but if the idea was for him to buy that non-buildable lot and drive over Clarence's property, why wouldn't Clarence have just sold him the whole strip? This B two property is under the ownership of Guido De Lutis. This Lot C property is under the ownership of Guido De Lutis. There was no reason for him to come out of this lot, drive down to this twenty-by-one-hundred strip, and then drive over the rocks and wrote a dendrum. So I think that in Sharon's reply, she talked about, you know, the, there was this, this plan, there was Clarence's plan that shows that he subdivided his property, so Clarence Campbell owned what is now thirty-one and thirty-five, and he really subdivided those properties. We purchased the B one property and built our house, and Guido De Lutis purchased this B two property. Again, there was no reason for him to drive down into the twenty-by-one-hundred foot strip and then drive over Clarence Campbell's property. Guido De Lutis's deed, I think it's seven-eight-six-seven, it's attached, that references back to Clarence Campbell's deed, three-one-oh-nine, pages one-oh-nine through one-twelve, and that deed clearly shows that Clarence Campbell is the ownership of this property, that's ninety-five point thirty-eight by twenty, as outlined by the survey that we submitted by our surveyor, A.S. Elliott. As I stated, this plan, there was no reason for Guido De Lutis to need any other property easements or deed of right from Campbell. Lot C existed with the same twenty-foot wide access as it exists today for Bill Felton driving down the street, and for Mr. Conroy's tenants to drive down the street and pull into their driveway as well. We are not disputing the use of the approved portion of Burns Ave that was taken in nineteen forty-six. We're not disputing the existing twenty feet that's being used. We are disputing the right for the Felton property, the De Lutis property, and the La Civita or Union Street parcel, now owned by Wall Street Development, Burns Ave Development, or any other parcel to use our private property. The applicant may have a right to travel over the fifteen-foot gap from the end of the taking of Burns Ave to the corner of Felton property. He may have a right to drive over the twenty-foot strip of road that Bill Felton has been driving over and Guido De Lutis drove over for twenty years, but he doesn't have a right to come onto our property and take our property and drive over it. I also would like to say that in the, in the conservation meeting a couple of nights ago, Landis commented that the fire department wants to see a fire access road, and this request is a Massachusetts general law requirement. There was a comment that the fire road needs, the fire road needs to conform to Massachusetts law, and some discussions ensued about Union Street. One of the conservation members commented that access over Union Street was denied on another project, and I believe that Wall Street Development is researching that matter, but I think it's important for this board. It's also important, from our perspective, that when the applicant began in December of two thousand and sixteen, the applicant submitted a plan for fourteen units, and that plan was coming in off of Union Street with a forty-foot wide access onto the La Civita and the Union Street property. As soon as the conservation turned down that construction and access road, the applicant changed his plan, understanding he couldn't come over Pickle Brook, and at that point, modified the plan and came down Burns Ave. The La Civita property, which was intended on being the access in and out of the proposed development, and now is no longer able to use, does not mean that he has a right to come down Burns Ave and take a piece of privately-owned property. I also would like to say that access over private property without permission or legal evidence, rights, deeds, easements, or right of way is a violation of our Fourteenth Amendment and our constitutional rights. Clarence Campbell owns that property. It's described in the legal deed registered in the Norfolk County Deeds, three-one-oh-nine, pages one-oh-nine through one-twelve. It's also shown on our current survey by A.S. Elliott dated October fifth. This piece of property, as I showed last meeting in videos and in photographs, has not been traveled over, has not been utilized by anyone for sixty-seven years, legend. The Campbell family has maintained that property. It remains untraveled, consists of large boulders and large shrubs. The sale of the B two property to De Lutis did not include any easements or rights above that, access over Campbell's private property. Again, there was no need for that to happen. De Lutis's Lot C had access as a standalone lot. The property being shown on the applicant's plans. The property being shown on the applicant's plans for the proposed 40B is through private property, and there's no permission, easements, rights of way, or access. And I repeat the Massachusetts Department law, which he obviously knows, that evidence of control of the site, usually a purchase and sale agreement, including access into and out of the parcel of land, must be proven by the applicant. And I believe that the applicant has not shown that legal evidence to this board. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Campbell, we're gonna take this information that you provided tonight and have it reviewed by town council.
And everything that we've submitted, does that go to Ms. Alfred?
Yes, he'll get a copy too.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
So, I'm just concerned because when, the first meeting, when you opened up the meeting, you stated the rules of 40B. And you said you cannot place conditions that would make the project not economical. And you gave us a list of things that the property owner must be able to prove that he owned the land, and one of them was access. So, is our consultant that was granted to, funds were granted to have the consultant through Mass Housing Partnership, does he work for Mass Housing Partnership or is like?
Good question.
I think I need to clear the record. What I'm saying is they absolutely need to prove site control. That's part of something that Mass Housing does. That's something that they need to prove when they submit their comprehensive permit. My point is that it shouldn't be necessarily the duty of the board to necessarily make a decision on evidence about whether they, you know, either they have it or they don't, right? So I think that the plan to make a determination with town council, or better yet, ask for information from the applicant to prove that he has access, to see whether he has access or not. But ultimately, I don't think it's this board's duty to try to make that determination by collecting evidence at a public hearing. Okay? By taking evidence about private property, interest rights are not part of the comprehensive permit as far as proving site control at this stage. If we wanna go, and again, this is me just coming in now. If we wanna go back and say that this comprehensive permit isn't complete because they don't have site control, and they should have never gotten their, their letter from Mass Housing, that's something that we should look into. But I don't think it should be part of the public hearing process because it's not up to the board to determine private interest rights. Okay?
So as a follow-up to that,
Yep.
many of us neighbors were made aware that the applicant, prior to him submitting the 40B with the town, we knew he was going through the process with Mass Housing Partnership. We were, we, a majority of us submitted testimony and evidence regarding the non-access. So I, to what he's saying, we feel like, we feel like it shouldn't have even gotten here. Mass Housing Partnership had to do diligence to take the information that we provided, surveys and everything, and should not have let it even get to this. So I guess that's where we stand.
If it's a concern with the board, we're happy to have that conversation with Mass Housing if this is a major issue for them, that they don't think that they provided site control. We can certainly research that and have a conversation with them.
George, do you want to?
That would be great. I mean, that would be better coming from the consultant. From Mass Housing, he'd be able to easily, more easily have that dialogue than we would, which would tend to fall on deaf ears. I mean, I have to emphasize, you know, project eligibility letter is what gets the applicant in the gate. So, you know, that would be very helpful if Paul could address that with Mass Housing.
I'd just like to say though, we do have an eligible project eligibility letter. And it has been issued, it was vetted by Mass Housing. They did issue, we had to buy evidence of site control, which we did. So I am a little concerned of just trying to bring them back into a mix of still a legal matter which is not even settled by three attorneys looking at it now. Where Mass Housing has issued a legitimate project eligibility.
There's no, you have a letter of eligibility right now. There's, and we're moving forward based, based on that. I think that there's been some questions raised, we've gone back and forth. We have, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this. And I think what, one of the questions is to have Mass Housing take a look at it and say, you know, you know, you know, as the, our consultant will do, is just say, hey, you know, where does this stand?
Mr. Chair, too, I keep calling him Paul because I deal with the point of his law progress.
I have it.
On another form.
My father's Paul, too. He's a real estate attorney in Westford, so I get called Paul all the time.
I meant, I meant Chris.
Mr. Chairman, I may have to say one thing. At the last hearing that we were at, town council submitted an email opinion that was not read into the record, I took it as if you read it into the record.
Out of the record.
Which basically determines that we do have access over the portion of property that is being disputed by the Campbell's. So, you know, we've been deliberating this thing for well, over two years. We've provided legal opinions that have been reviewed by town council on numerous occasions. And on each occasion, the town council has agreed that we have access over the portion of Burns Avenue that's been questioned here tonight and at the last meeting. So, as every attorney will tell you, that if there's a dispute between parties over the rights of access on a private piece of property, then those matters are typically resolved in some sort of a judiciary or legal process. And so, if, you know, it's essentially, we've tried to work with the Campbell's on this matter for a better part of the last two years. And apparently, they don't wanna believe our opinion. But they provided no legal opinion themselves to rebut what we've concluded. And town council has agreed with our legal opinion. So, we continue to have this discussion every meeting. And I don't think it's fair to us as the applicant to continue that dialogue.
And as long as the neighbors bring in new evidence, as Mrs. Campbell did this evening, the zoning board will accept it and we're gonna work to clarify this. Yes, Mrs. Campbell?
Kathy Campbell, 35 Burns Avenue. I just would like to say a couple of things. Mr. Petrosi is right, we've been at this for a few years. I was in front of this board for 14 months. I was told by the building commissioner that if we had a survey showing that we owned that piece of property, then, then this project would be dead in the water. At the time that we were going through the 14 months, it was difficult for me to hire a surveyor because I was honest and told them that there was a dispute. And I got $20,000 quotes, and I wasn't in a position to do that. When the first project was denied, I went out and hired a surveyor, gave him the deeds, got a surveyed piece of property back showing clear ownership of that piece of property that Mr. Petrosi's traveling over. It's in a legal deed, it's on a survey. Not sure how much legal evidence I can produce other than that deed and that survey. And, and I stand here tonight, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars deep in this. But it is our property. And when I, out of fairness to this board, I would like them to know that when we did our submission to Mass Housing, it was sometime prior to me getting the survey from our surveyor. So the Mass Housing has issued their letter of.
Eligibility.
Eligibility, thank you. Not, not having that survey, I subsequently reached out to Michael Busby to let him know that we had been in this position for almost 14 months and that Mr. Petrosi's prior project was denied. And he asked me to PDF and send the survey to him in the instance that the board would reach back out to Mass Housing for any sort of clarity. So if the board is reaching back out to Mass Housing, the evidence of that survey was not part of what I submitted. So I think that that would be important for them to see if we're gonna go back and look at whether or not this is an eligible project based on, you know, our deed and our survey. Thank you.
Yes, dear.
Finally, one concern I have about this, yes, we have gone back and forth and back and forth. But I went and saw the property with Suzanne, and we also walked the property. And the, the area that Mr. Petrosi thinks and, and has quoted that people have driven over, has a boulder on it, probably the size of this, and a rhododendron's maybe seven or eight feet tall. There is no way, under God's blue sky, anybody has driven over that. So, that's sort of where I'm coming from. You know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be fair about this. But in reality, when something is presented as, oh, people have driven over this, it's, it's, it's problematic to me. Because clearly, nobody's driven over those boulders.
Okay, so we're gonna wrap up the site access part tonight, but the way I'd like to leave it, Chris, you're gonna reach out?
Yeah, and I think, I think we're probably gonna issue an opinion about how we should handle this going forward. Again, I don't think that it necessarily should be something that is in consideration as far as a comprehensive permit in front of you. It's whether they meet the regulations or not. So I think we'll talk to Mass Housing that this is a major concern for the, for the board. And we'll do some research, and I'm sure we'll catch up with town council. But I don't think that as far as the public hearing is going forward, that it's really a matter of relevancy when it comes to their application before you on the substance.
Right, okay.
We will have to make sure it gets all information.
Having, having just litigated a case about private, you know, title rights, they are very complex. And, you know, nobody can figure it out. So, you know, it certainly isn't the board's job to try to figure it out.
Okay, so, yes?
So, not talking about Burns Ave., but if we're talking about someone's had access to property for a long period of time, going back to my neighbors, the Yuseviches on Union Street, the access that the applicant is planning to use for the utilities. He's taken care of that property since I've been there and forever. And it hasn't been used by the applicant or the previous landowner. Is there, is there like eminent domain for him having maintained that property for more than 20 years? I mean, where does it, where?
The one thing, we're not, we're not gonna give legal advice here at the zoning board meeting. But I think that, you know, you know, that's, that's something that you can raise as a question.
For town council's review, I mean.
Yeah, they need to stay on.
Well, I can give that opinion now, there's no private eminent domain right, but.
Okay. Address possession or something?
Type of thing could possibly be, but it's not, then we're really kinda going outside.
Well, it's, for me, I think it's as ridiculous as the argument of traveling over a boulder. So.
I should say just to clear it up too, about the, I'm not so sure about the, I'm, I'm not really gonna touch on what Shirin's dealt with, but even I can understand Shirin's opinion about that it really had more to do with an easement by implication. It wasn't a prescriptive easement type of thing, that somebody traveled over it. It had to do with a reservation and deeds and that type of thing. But an easement by implication, as opposed to somebody traveling over something. So I, I think that probably that's gonna continue to be the focus of her opinion. But we'll see how that comes out. So I'm not, I just wanna be clear about that. I don't, I don't think the remedy issue is gonna end up being somebody traveling over that piece of the boulder.
Okay.
Okay, for the applicant, next time we meet, we're gonna have probably a revised plan, is that, is that what you expect?
When would be your next meeting, what's your schedule?
One of the things, what I'd like to do is we're gonna split, split it off. So the next time we meet, it's only gonna be on the Burns Ave. comprehensive permit. We're not gonna have any other public hearing, so.
Oh, you mean one night for us?
One, you'll have your own night for us. No, you are. We're all special, all right? So what, you know, I don't wanna meet until you have time to work on these things. And the other thing that, and Chris, guide me on this, a pro forma that talks about the profitability. Because one of the things we have to make sure is whatever we do, we don't make this project uneconomic for the developer.
Well, you're asking, you wanna see a pro forma?
Right.
This is not the stage for that. It's not, so all the peer reviewing is done, and there's actually a draft decision that's been written before we get to that stage. So it doesn't seem like we're close to that at this point.
Okay.
And just so the public understands, on a, on a 40B comprehensive permit, the developer is allowed to make a profit, but it's capped at 20% profit. So one of the things that the zoning board has to make sure is that whatever we, whatever conditions we put on, we don't make it uneconomic for the developer. Stop me if I'm going wrong here.
No, that's fine, yeah.
And, and what we wanna make sure is that, you know, we don't make, do something that makes the project uneconomic because there's the affordable housing component in this. But that doesn't, but to know whether it's gonna be economic or not, we have to understand, you know, the property acquisition cost, the construction cost, the roadway cost and things like that. But you're saying that's something that we would look at further down.
Yeah, you'll only get into it if you deny something and then they say that renders it uneconomic either that singly or in the aggregate. So you really are not gonna have that discussion unless and until you deny some type of waiver and they, they say that's gonna render it uneconomic.
Okay.
That sort of makes it tough because.
It makes it very tough.
We don't know at what point is it economic.
But that's, that's something that's important for this hearing, and Chris was touching on it. I mean, you really wanna focus these hearing sessions on the issues that are really within your jurisdiction and the regulations, because you wanna, you wanna have public hearing time that you can start to address what they really need. As Phil was pointing out about, well, we want specifics as to the need for the waiver, what that is. And then you wanna have that dialogue, well, we don't see a need to grant you this waiver. You can meet this setback, or you can provide this stormwater standard. Then, then they have to get back to you and say, that's gonna render it uneconomic. In which case, then they have to provide a pro forma. So it's very good if you can have hearing time to go through that dialogue with them. I had one recently, you know, that, that dialogue was cut off because they ran out of hearing time and the applicant insisted on the closing of the hearing. So all that issue is gonna take place at a, at the Housing Appeals Committee level. But you'd rather have that here.
Okay.
So, just going forward, what would be your schedule, like in July or?
Well, July 17th is our next ZBA hearing, too. If you, if you want one in July by itself, just keep in mind that I'm on conservation as well. So I might be conflicted with that one, but.
But didn't we only have one hearing in July?
Yeah, 17th.
The 17th.
So we could.
I want conservation too, so it just depends.
Oh, okay.
So you have conservation on the 17th, too?
No, I have, I have conservation on the 10th, 17th of ZBA, so.
So if we continue to the July 17th, that would give us two meetings, two more meetings with the conservation commission before coming back to here on the 17th. And at that point, we would have revised plans. And we would be able to show the traffic improvements and other things that have been discussed. And also a substantial list of the waivers.
The chart of waivers.
Yes, yes. We could be, we could have that, say, a week before the public hearing on the 17th. So that Beta would be able to review that.
I mean, a week.
It's only seven days from conservation.
Or should, or do you wanna go?
Yeah, it needs to be.
Needs to be.
I'm on vacation.
Or should we, I'm, I'm offering you a.
If you wanna, if you wanna have a substantial meeting on, like the 24th.
How do board members feel about that? How do board members feel about that?
How do board members feel?
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's video, they can watch it and then do that.
But can you do it on the 24th?
Uh, yes.
I think the issue we're going to run into is that our deadline for decision is September 2nd. And I think there's a fair amount of stuff to get through still, so.
I think maybe it's appropriate time to ask for an extension on the hearing, if the, if the applicant is willing.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to grant an extension at this point. What's the decision deadline?
September 2nd.
We have time.
Was it, what, when was it? It was 2/11 that was submitted?
2/13.
The date is actually on the binder in the front that you have.
I thought it was 2/11.
Yeah, I think it might be sooner than that. So we, we will check on that. Is, do you, are you represented by council that we can make to, so can we talk directly to you?
Okay.
All right. So we'll work that out, if for some reason we don't think there's enough time, we can work out and get an extension before the next meeting. If it's in August, I think it'd be appropriate if the applicant gave us an extension now, but we'll double check on the timeline.
Okay. Why did we think it was September?
I calculated it, 180 days, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not very good at figuring the date of submission.
From the data, from the data.
I'm not good at that.
It's 28 days.
Okay. So, yes.
I'm sorry, can I just ask for Claire, I have some notes that in one of, in one of the meetings, the 180, we were told 180 days started on March 6th, which was the first open meeting. So is it the first open meeting, or is it the date that the submission was turned in?
There's two deadlines, but most importantly, it's the hearing day, it's supposed to be hearing day.
So you'll, you'll verify what to?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll keep track of it. I think Amy got it.
Yeah, yeah.
You did it, Amy?
From March 6th to Mondays, September 2nd.
So 180 days from the hearing.
From the hearing, yeah.
I wrote it in, it's in the file.
You, excuse me, but do you have a meeting scheduled in September yet?
September 4th.
So we should probably be concerned at least until late past September 4th. On September 4th, you have a hearing, and it closes in a week to write the decision.
We're going to need, we have 20 days to write.
How many days?
Forty.
No, four, no, that.
Was it 40?
Yeah.
Do you want to do a time extension now, because I have the paper.
Yeah, do you want to?
Yes.
Do you want to do a time extension?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, I forgot the date of, and time.
When do, extended until?
September 4th.
I thought you said a day after September 4th.
Yeah, like the 11th.
The 11th.
And you're going to just.
We don't have to file.
Flow of the public hearing.
We don't have to file, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no.
We have the fourth meeting, and then we have time to file.
This is, yeah.
No, the only thing extended is the hearing day at this point.
But if we're having another hearing in July, why can't we just do the extension in July? Why should we do it, why do we have to do it now?
The, we don't have to do it now, but I think the board would feel more comfortable if you did.
But you don't have to.
No, but what I'm saying is, this implies that we're continuing tonight's hearing until September 4th.
Is this language you're teaching?
No, no, no.
Is this language you're teaching?
There's only one here.
This is the standard.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any extension for the decision day, just, the only thing that we, yeah, extended is hearing day.
Your form is good, don't change.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, just have it.
Okay.
Because then that gives you less time.
Yeah, okay.
What's later?
For later.
Second.
Yeah.
Usually?
Yeah.
Well, that's, we can.
About a week out, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, we actually need to close the public hearing. You may, do you mind if I revise this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Not much of an extension, I mean, seven days, but.
All right.
We can always get another extension if it's necessary.
Hopefully, yeah. We can't focus, hopefully, after we agree.
Right. No, that's, if the applicant agrees to.
So just for clarification, we're going to have a, continue this till July 24th, that what we're doing.
Does that work for board members? July 24th?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to continue this until, then it will be a separate meeting, and the only thing on the agenda will be Burnzav comprehensive permit.
Is that clear?
I think we're back to real life again.
At the town?
I think, right, Amy?
What?
It's going to be back.
Yes.
About the 17th, is that back?
Yeah. Do you read the meeting on the 24th?
I do, so I should pay attention.
A malicious request.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want to sign this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. John, when do we get an extension to?
September 11th.
And that's just to close the public?
Yeah.
No, you'll have more time under your, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, whatever, you have 45 days?
Forty days.
Yeah. I mostly would have a mark.
July 17th is.
Because I know the rules are different for 48 and 40B, is it?
It's going to try and do it as long.
You get a lot to do with it in that time, but it's an additional amount of time.
Okay, this is, so could I have a motion to continue?
That's.
Accept an extension.
Okay. Motion to accept the continuance until September 11th.
Of the, of the deadline to close the public hearing.
Deadline to close the public hearing. Okay, move by Suzanne.
Okay.
Second by Jane. All those for the favor. Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, abstained, so carry. Okay, now, our next hearing, that's just, that's out until September, our next hearing on this matter will be, Amy, July 24th?
Yes, yes.
And we will be back at Town Hall?
I will have to confirm that the main meeting room is available that night, but I'm assuming it will be.
You might want to call Amy.
July 24th at Town Hall for 7:00 PM for the continuance. And the only thing on the agenda that night will be Burnzav.
Yes.
Okay, the next case we have is a continued hearing for Dupont Village, 160, 170, 180 Main Street, case number 0619. The applicant wants to come forward.
We're trying to guess which one we have by side. I think it's Arrington.
It's been a couple of months, but we're good.
How you been, all right?
Newly retired, yes, newly retired.
Are you?
I'm a guard, yep.
You really finally did it?
I had to join the chairman, you know.
He finally did it, it's only been 100 years.
Kicking and screaming.
Thirty, thirty, thirty years.
Thirty years and 11 months.
Wow, really? How many days?
No, it's still a day. Thirty-three years and 11 months.
Really?
Kind of aggravated, I mean, if you can get one more month out of it, just 30, 40.
Listen, you're safely here with us, so.
Okay. So we were here last time, and you proposed some residential units at Dupont Village?
Yes.
And we talked about the housing, the number of units that were approved back in 1986? Do we have that decision here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no, it looks like 88, but, idiot. And then some other revisions in 1993. But what we're talking about is the number of units remains the same.
Correct.
And these are going to be single-family home, what is it?
No, I got to get the math right. Eight units will be in four duplexes. The balance of them are actually going to be in addition to the main building, so they would affect the build by the apartments, just a continuation of the building that's currently present. So it's kind of a mix. The majority of the units being built, again, it's just to get back up, they're still under the threshold of 250, but to get back up to there, to keep saying built, it's not extra. Are actually attached to the main building, pretty much, if it's approved, they won't be able to tell the difference between the whole building blends, the interior blends. I may have just promised something to you, but I didn't mean to. But that, that is the intention, that for the most part, other than a larger building, it doesn't look any different.
Okay. So last time you were here, I think we were pretty clear on the concept.
Has everything changed from conservation?
They.
I can give you a 30 second loadout.
Would you?
As it relates to our application to the zoning board, nothing has changed. Parking stays the same, count stays the same, layout stays the same. We just actually added some additional stormwater enhancements. So basically, that's what they were limited, a limit of work in the expand, number of units, parking, more addressing water quality and stormwater calculations. We did submit to the board updated plans that are ultimately, were approved, I believe, the other night by the Conservation Commission. So you have the latest up-to-date plans.
And we're going to want to reference those in any decision that we have.
Yes, correct.
Just a quick question, Phil, where the new building is going, not the eight units?
Yep.
There is some parking there now, right? Where is that going?
That actually is one of the discussions we had last hearing, I think it was a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
So the parking lots being reconfigured, some of it will stay there. And again, this was a discussion the board needs to think through a little bit more. The four options, as the chairman pointed out, are make it actually conform by making it four feet bigger, is on the plan. We are respectfully asked that not happen.
Oh, the existing parking.
Existing parking. Because it pushes out a wall, four feet doesn't sound bad, but when it cascades into the wetlands, it becomes problematic. And I think the Conservation Commission sent you a comment, or at least Landis working on it, relevance to their preference to.
I met with Landis and Maggie probably about a month and a half ago, you know, to review the project, and we expressed the concern of this, and they were in agreement that it makes sense, you know, you could see the added impact if even just two feet were to extend. I did follow up with Maggie last week, asking her if she would be willing to get a, a letter from the commission as a favorable recommendation. We actually discussed that real briefly at the Conservation Commission as well. However, I think everybody was in agreement with it, but I haven't seen any correspondence on that, but the edge of the existing parking lot is against a relatively steep slope, so extending that out would cause alteration on the slope, which is within the buffer zone, prolonged exposed land disturbance areas that are just not very desirable as it relates to the land disturbance permit process that we went through with the Conservation Commission.
To amplify that, and I think get close to your question, because I didn't have the numbers at hand.
Yeah.
The current spot, current area is 81 spots. After the redesign, there'll be 54 spots there, so net reduction in that area.
Yeah.
And then we are proposing to relocate 27 spaces, both in the driveways and garages of the units, and then along the back driveway there, there's an additional area.
Okay.
So that's what happens, and everything new conforms completely.
Okay.
And so, back to my initial, we were given three options by the building inspector, he said, have you guys decide which you prefer?
We have to pick.
Yeah, so number one was approve the plan and find you don't need to do anything. Number two was call it a prior non-conforming use and alter it by way of special permit, and the third was the zoning variance. And again, as I start off, there's always the fourth option of build out the four feet. So that's hopefully, that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
So, Chris, sorry, just procedurally where we are, so are we, you're asking us to amend the prior special permit, or to reissue a new special permit that incorporates the conditions from the prior? What we were proposing, yes, I am to both. We're asking that the board basically vote to completely substitute the relief, substitute basically a clearer grant of the same relief brought up to today's terminology, take a look at the previous conditions, many of those, for whatever reason, really are part of the conservation jurisdiction, and so we probably need to take a review once your conditions is actually written. I have a draft, it hasn't been signed yet, so I can't give that to you tonight, I wish I could, and marry the two up. And I would suggest, again, certainly up to the board's decision, but as we're cleaning this up, zoning board, in my opinion, should have zoning issues, and totally appropriate to reference the litter conditions by reference, so if we in effect, the Conservation, have to change one of those, I'm not trying to chase around fat pieces, and likewise, they can reference yours, and when we go to the planning board, we start that process tomorrow night, hopefully they'll reference both of your decisions, so that when you look at each of them apart, it makes total sense, given who we're talking to, but as a whole, covers all the concerns.
We just do elaborate on that. We did provide the commission with old documentation, or the original special permit that outlined a number of those conditions, which, if you take a look, as Phil has mentioned, is, majority of them are, a significant amount of them are conservation related, about fertilizing, maintenance, drainage, and things of that nature. So we provided them the old to incorporate to the new, so there's not that overlap that Phil's been mentioning, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think the best way to proceed is to have a new decision cleaned up that deals with zoning bylaws as of 2019. Still, you know, we can still reference the, what happened in the past, but moving forward, it would be an updated special permit.
Completely agree. I'd actually put in one of the conditions that this supersedes everything. So that, to your point, we're looking at this one that your board does, again, title of your, what?
Are you doing a draft?
I will, we weren't quite there yet.
No, that's okay.
We gave our presentation, and I figured I would, because the chairman mentioned that there are lots of questions, which I totally get, and I want to hear those, but for a nice meeting, I'd be happy to have a draft that we could wrestle with.
Yeah. And as far, do any board members have concerns about the, instead of 18 and a half feet for the parking, giving a waiver for down to 18 in this location?
How, how much of that parking lot is actually used on a regular basis?
I would steal a little bit more, but I think it's probably in the almost half-range, 60% range.
I mean, Phil Cook, by the way, for the benchmarks, you're right, is the applicant. If you kind of look at some of the aerial photos here, you can think that's taken on a typical.
that deals with zoning bylaws as of two thousand and nineteen. Still, you know, we can still reference the, what happened in the past, but moving forward, it would be an updated special permit.
Completely agree. I'd actually put in one of the conditions that this supersedes everything.
Absolutely.
So that, to your point, we're looking at this one that your board does. Title of your...
Are you doing a draft?
I will, we weren't quite there yet.
No, that's okay.
We gave our presentation and I figured I would, because the chairman mentioned that there are lots of questions, which I totally get and I wanted to hear those. But for a nice meeting, I'd be happy to have a draft that we could wrestle with.
Yeah. And as far, do any board members have concerns about the, instead of eighteen and a half feet for the parking, giving a waiver for down to eighteen in this location?
How, how much of that parking lot is actually used on a regular basis?
It feels a little bit more, but I think it's probably in the almost half range, sixty percent range.
Phil Cook, by the way, for the benchmarks in your language, the advocate. If you kinda look at some of the aerial photos here, you can see that's taken on a typical day, and I would say that's pretty typical.
Yeah, it's a little...
Yeah, it's like half. Drawn by the day, I mean, it's a few cars.
Exactly. And a lot of these calculations that you see as minimum requirements, there's some two-bedroom units and the like. Well, that two-bedroom unit requires two parking under the new zoning regulations. Generally, when you have retired individuals, they don't have too many vintage cars. They very seldom have one as well.
And I'd also, as I said, I'd just also like to indicate that since we took over, we also, as I think we referenced in the last meeting, dedicated one wing to Alzheimer's care. So effectively, we have fifteen units that can, of course.
Yeah.
So the, I saw in the site development plans, reduce, ask for, you're asking for a waiver for the lots from eighteen and a half feet down to eighteen feet?
Yes.
Would it make sense to reduce your number of parking spots where you just said that you don't...
We are actually already asking, and that was granted the initial special permit, for a reduction down to two ninety-five?
It was two ninety-four, two ninety-five, I believe. Yeah, so two ninety-five was allowed or permitted, which was below the requirement back in the late eighties, which was three hundred and eighty-two required. So with our new calculations, under the current zoning bylaws, we're looking at, no, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty-two are, is what's required right now. We were approved for the same number of units as we're going to be meeting with for two hundred and ninety-five. So we're increasing that two hundred and ninety-five to three hundred and six. So it's eleven spaces additional that we're adding, but we're not adding any more units that, that wasn't previously for parking.
There's a question on that, I think I may have asked about this before, but the previous limit for independent units was a hundred and fifty, under the prior decision.
Correct, I believe so.
And now, the request is to modify that to up to two hundred and thirty-three independent units. So that's about eighty-three additional units that have, that could have independent living folks who drive and park their cars, so.
That's correct, but I think back in the old, the older regulations, they didn't necessarily distinct, there's no distinction between the two, independent versus assisted living. Now, there's somewhat more of a clear guideline as to what's necessary in the zoning regulation. So, you know, now we have a clear guidance as to how to make the parking count work, but back in the day, we didn't have that.
Yes, to that point, you're a hundred percent right. You could have potentially eighty-five more cars based on that number. But to Jim's point, those of us who remember when it was initially built, again, sort of trying to update to today's bylaw, there was no definition of independent versus assisted.
That's true.
So it's whatever the...
Total amount of units.
Whoever ran the, excuse me, the place.
Facility.
Decided it was. And I used the example last time, you know, when my grandmothers both moved in, they were driving. By the time they both left, they were not. They never moved units, and so someone just kinda went, "Yep, this is now assisted." And there's nothing wrong with that, because there's no definition. Now, you actually have to be licensed by the state, so on and so forth. So even if, again, my grandmother moved in or anyone's, just because they stop being independent and need assisted care, the unit doesn't flip over anymore. It's going to be always independent living, regardless of the actual needs of the occupant. But for those that are actually licensed by the state, which is why we're asking for more flexibility now under the current definitions.
This table is very good. So you have thirty-two assisted units now, and at the end of this, you're gonna have thirty-two assisted?
Correct.
That's correct.
Which is the Alzheimer's unit.
Which, and additionally, we also, above that, we also do have, half of that is our Alzheimer's, the other half is regular assisted living, if you will. But all thirty-two units are now licensed officially by the state in one specific area, because all the regulations that come with that were, as you said previously, it didn't, it was more kind of a little loose.
Yeah, it really was, yeah.
Yeah. So we don't really, the use is gonna change, but the label is certainly...
Yeah.
Potentially more drivers.
I think there are. I think that with fifty...
With the Alzheimer's, no driving.
Right, but that's not changing. We're going from a hundred and sixty-seven independent right now, up to two hundred and fourteen independent.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're correct, but again, that was what was approved in the past, where there was really no definition of independent versus assisted living. So, and the way it's been operating through the past of the property, we've been looking at thirty-three being assisted, with the remaining part of the independent. So what we're seeing right now, from a parking standpoint, you're correct, the parking demand's gonna go up a little bit. I see where you're going with your concern. The parking demand will go up a little bit, but what we're experiencing now is something that's way under capacity from the full we have, so.
Have they ever had a parking problem?
Parking problems maybe once or twice a year when they have family outings, the barbecue, they park up and down the street. Other than that, there's been, we're not aware of any concerns.
Mother's Day and Thanksgiving.
Yeah, exactly, it's the...
And, and when you say parking up and down the street, you're talking...
Private way.
Inside the commonway.
Inside the commonway, it does not go out to main street. That's a lot of cars going down that road.
I guess this was a very long way of answer, and we'd like to keep those extra eleven and not go down to two ninety-five or below.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns?
No.
Okay, is there, just aside from the parking, is there any, hasn't been any evaluation, any traffic generation that would be different and of any concern? In light of the fact that they will be...
No, we haven't looked at the traffic generations. These are very low traffic generators. And obviously, we're currently approved for two hundred and ninety-five units. And with those two hundred and ninety-five units, we would say, this is the traffic that we're gonna be generating. So we're still matching that. So, you know, by right, under the existing special permit, we would be able to increase the traffic, even though it's marginal, up to that two hundred and ninety-five unit. You know, what would be generated by that?
Just a point of clarification, it's two ninety-five parking spots, or...
Oh, two, no, I'm sorry.
Six, two hundred and fifty units.
Two hundred and fifty units, I'm sorry.
We're not trying to go above the...
Two hundred and fifty units. Trying to get, I'm, I'm working on commission. No, but in looking at that, we spoke with the planner when he was here at that time, and I believe some of his recommendations were that it didn't make sense to have a traffic assessment, based upon the history of the site that was approved for the two hundred and fifty units. And that these are low generation, off-peak hours, because they're retired individuals, they're not out there between the hours of seven and eight in the morning. They may have a ten o'clock coffee, and lots of times, benchmark is...
And as I said, I also put in that we actually do also have a bus, and we offer daily trips, so people don't have to pay their car.
Right, and that gets all accounted into those calculations that would just ultimately result in no impact. Like, they also have a lot of services. They've also updated their facility to offer a lot of services that would generally do increase your traffic, going to the barber or the hairdresser, you know, so they bring these surfaces into, into the building. So further eliminating, you know, traffic and congestion around the surrounding neighborhoods.
We even have a small bank branch in the building for a lot of local banks.
Why didn't you know that?
ATM.
Are they coming after these facilities for pylons or anything? For protective barriers so that the people drive into their own apartments? They are, they are bringing it up in the state house.
Yes, there's, when we, when we look at these developments, I understand the concern because...
Look at the senior center, I guess.
They're, it's a true concern, because we definitely address that more in a commercial setting, where if you look at, when we design something as an engineer, we say, "This is an area of congregation." People are gonna sit out on the patio and, or, you know, have a larger area just to do pitch a putt, they have a putting green. Well, we don't want parking stalls right there that everybody jumps a curb and hits in the front door. Well, if you know you're gonna have a crowd of people there, you're promoting congregation, that's when you protect, with bollards or planters that weigh four thousand pounds when they're filled with soil. So there's no areas here that we need that, which is good, but obviously, we do have...
Till I know about that.
Only you be the one with noise.
On the, the units in the back, these, why are they three-bedroom units? What's the thought for that?
Well, the thought process on that...
Guest, just, but limited stay guests, grandchildren for a night or a day or something like that, or people from out of town, family that comes in. You know, not everybody, a lot of time, you know, one of the great things about this is it allows, a lot of times, people as they age to stay where they are, which is a great thing, you know, instead of, you know, my sister moved to Indiana to go to college and never came back. You know, that's me personally, so, you know, would my mother prefer to stay where she was or move to Indiana? Well, for those of the Northeastern, you know, that one. But so, so that being the case, a lot of times, there are other children who move to other parts of the country and they'll come and they can visit for a day or two.
Okay, so it's the flex, it's...
It's actually more like a...
Downsizing step. Downsizing step. For those individuals that are retiring, they're coming from a large house, that aren't ready to go into a four-hundred-square-foot apartment, well, they're gonna take a step down into a unit that has all of the amenities of the larger unit, but you still feel independent, separate, your own home, allow the, you know...
I was gonna say, typically, the way those, those units, the way those units are laid out is it's fully functional on the ground floor. So it's a master bedroom, everything is on one level, for, again, for the resident we're looking for. And then the secondary space is more of a loft space up on the upstairs where some people have seen, we have some other locations. Sometimes it's an office, sometimes, again, it's, you know, for guest space. Most of the time, it's for everything that came out of the house that you're not ready to give it up yet.
So when they stick the husband, right?
There you go, Rick's talking to the...
John, can I ask one quick question? At the last meeting, a butter on Bullard Street had brought up concerns regarding screenage. I noticed that your side setback went from a hundred and fifty feet down to fifty-one feet. Have you addressed any of that sides? I apologize if you brought this up or clarified it at the last meeting, but I just didn't know if you addressed that neighbor concerns or...
We've, we've spoken with the neighbors in those and we have provided screening. During the conservation process, the neighbors come out again, talked about a number of conservation-related issues, but they've also discussed screening, which is a planning mode issue. We've been having back-and-forth dialogue with the individual that is representing the Willa Pond Association way in the back, which is Willa Pond.
Noah.
Up here.
Yeah.
So we're looking at potentially enhancing some of the screening for those butters, you know, extending it down and around. Just as recent as, I think yesterday, we've had some dialogue back and forth. So there may be an enhancement to the screening there. I don't foresee, unless something dramatically goes different that we wouldn't expect with the planning board, I don't foresee anything changing as far as unit count and parking, but there's more of an enhanced screening. That, that's kind of why we stopped our screening here. Their concern is visibility to these guys over here, which are over two hundred feet of wooded area.
I think what the comment was, and I actually visited the property and saw that the screening that's currently on the site was heading northeast of the property.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, 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 was what the butter had brought up at the last meeting and what I visually saw when I traveled the property.
I think they said it needs updating or something.
Right, yeah.
So basically, this is the drive aisle coming down the side of the building.
Yep.
Looking at the corner. And you see these tremendous white pines that are thirty feet high. So what we're doing is we're taking that end area there, even though these white pines, they're all along this rough path here, and they extend around. So we're just gonna take that and extend it around. So we're, we're screening it out, but maintaining that same type of vegetation. Same type of plantings. Granted, it might take a few years for them to grow, but what we're proposing is the same type of species that will provide the same solid, evergreen vegetate, uh, screen. And we're sure we'll be talking about this in the planning board as well, but figured just to let you know where we're heading with that.
Just one other, more brain damage, but the, we're talking about issuing a clean special permit under the current bylaw. Under the current bylaw, the special permit granting authority for this type of facilities, planning board not busy being, as I read it in section ten A. So I understand that if we're amending our old decision that it would stay with us, but I'm just trying to figure out what...
What we filed, we're asking for an amendment, but by way of amendment would be, and I would suggest, I'll, I'll fight with this in my brain and kind of make it a little cleaner. But I would say you would amend the old special permit by striking the paragraph and in its place inserting the new, which is done fairly regularly. That, that's, that was where Mike Danabick kinda steered us.
So do you want to, are you gonna have a revised, do you have another revised plan, or is this...
No, you have the current plan that the state's plans right now, which addresses all Conservation Commission items. It addresses some of the, well, it addresses all of the comments that were issued to your board by the various staff, the engineering department and others. So they're up to date, we haven't heard any other feedback on the revised plans, but I think we're up to date with all revisions that are proposed thus far.
Okay, and I think we're, a board member's okay with the eighteen-foot parking, parking spaces? So, so question is, should we keep the hearing open to get a draft decision, or should we...
I would keep it open to get conservation information too.
We already issued a order of conditions.
No, for us to look at.
I, I would suggest we keep this open so we can actually have a dialogue, because otherwise...
Yeah.
I can talk to more of the three of you at once without running into any more...
That's true.
So, so what you're hearing from us tonight, not an issue on the eighteen-foot parking. Everything else, the number of units, looks, looks good. So, and based on, yes, the plan and conservation approval, don't see, don't see any issues with this. So let's keep it open and then we can talk about how best to do with the mechanics of whether it's a new decision or an amended decision.
Well, I guess the draft is...
Well, if you draft it, we'll work with it, without anyone that... Yeah, anybody from the public that wants to comment on this? New Pond Village? What's it called in the states? Okay, so, what's that? When do you want to continue this to?
We can go in July if you've got time. Did you just give July to...
No, we're...
No, no, several meetings.
July...
We have two hearings and the deadline to submit any others is closed, so we have a short...
Okay, okay, so let's go with July seventeen?
July tenth.
July tenth.
No, I lied, sorry, seventeen, seventeen.
July seventeen, continue to then, and then can talk about which, what's the best way for a decision moving forward?
I'll have a draft, you're bored the week before, so if you get some time, I'll look at and I'll spring a run.
That'd be great, good.
Yep.
And just one, did your father do the work for this?
No, he didn't actually at the beginning.
What's that?
He did not.
Who, who did the, who did the original work back in the eighties?
No one that I recognize, so.
That was...
The decision was...
The decision was...
It would've been written better if it was.
Seeing that my father was one of the people that wrote the decision, I don't know. That's why I was wondering if your dad was on it, involved with it.
No, I, I, we got involved fifteen years ago.
Okay. Okay, so, um, could I have a motion to continue this until, uh, July seventeen?
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jane. All those in favor of continuing?
Nice.
Oh.
Main meeting.
All those in favor of continuing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carry.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got two new cases this evening. Okay. Seven Pintail Road, who's here for that? Okay. Let's read the legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of Town of Wapole will hold a public hearing in the Richard Stillman Community Room, Wapole Police Department on Wednesday, June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen at seven PM on an application from Richard Doherty, case number ten dash nineteen with respective property located at Seven Pintail Road, Wapole, Mass. Zoning District GR. The application is a special permit under section five D, point two of the zoning bylaws to allow conversion of a existing storage room into a small kitchen to enable an in-law apartment on the second floor of a single family home. The application may be reviewed in the offices of the Board of Appeals. We have some comments from, um, different departments, from Maggie Walker, Town Engineer. Let's see. And Town Engineer notes, uh, and this is dated May sixteenth. Original engineering comments on minimum lot size. No information has been provided to determine the compliance of this provision. Number two, uh, section five B two C two specifies a minimum and maximum size of the in-law suite. Application applicant should be provide, uh, be required to provide square footage is necessary to determine compliance with this section. Point three. Section five B two C four requires that there be no more than two exterior landings and specifies a size. Landings both existing and proposed should be clearly labeled so the plans, uh, can be determined if in compliance. Section, um, section five B two C ten requires that parking comply with the bylaw. Information regarding the number of vehicles and adequacy of parking on this site should be provided in order to determine compliance. And that is from Town Engineer. From the Police Department, the Wapole Police does not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic in this case filed with the zoning Board of Appeals. Board of Sewer and Water Commissioners concurs with the comments made by the Town Engineer with regards to the above subject. Board of Health, um, voted that they have no specific concerns. Okay. So, if you want to explain what's being proposed, then we'll go from there.
I think they did provide answers to those three questions to her directly, written, in that she, do you have those?
What we have is, um, see if butter list determination, one large lot. Um, these your comments on here?
I actually wrote something.
In, in writing?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then she responded back, she responded back with, with the, uh.
I guess what's unusual about the, um, Swan Pond.
So if you would just.
The part of this that here was everybody in the whole.
You would just introduce yourself then?
My name is Robert Doherty, um, at the Seven Pintail Road. Um, when I went to get the butter's list, I was expecting just the homes that are adjacent to me as a butter, but apparently the way this is done. Seven Pintail Road, Seven Pintail, um, Swan Pond is one lot.
One lot, yeah. Yeah.
So everybody in the, in the whole development is a butter. That's the way it's laid out. So they put out the butter notice to everybody and, uh, so as far as, um, that, that's why I said that's, that's the response. As far as a landing, it was just one landing I showed on the plan. It's in here. Um, this diagram of the stairs. It shows, so this is coming up from the, this is the. Okay, so this is the stairway coming up right here from, from the downstairs. It comes up from the fourth floor up here to a landing. Right here, it's now going into here. This is a lot area over here for storage. Um, you can probably see it on the other one here. See, here's the stairway going up. Here's the lot area there, which is, which is over here. And this is the area that got, it's got, that's been finished off. It's already got an existing bedroom, bathroom and computer room. And this, this computer storage room is what I was looking to put a small kitchen area into. Um, uh, my niece nephew getting married, they want a place to stay in Wapole. I said, you're welcome. I have a house, there's plenty of room for me. And they said, it's just, they feel funny walking through my kitchen downstairs. I don't have any problem with it. They said, if you just have a kitchen F here, it would help us with convenience and I'll, I'll just do that. So I couldn't do that to convert this to a kitchen area, and then it raised this issue about how do you do that legitimately? So I went through all the permitting to get that done, and he said, you have to apply for this special permit for in-law apartment to enable a second kitchen in the home because they don't want the neighborhood to be multi-family, it's a single family home. So my intent is to keep it as a single family home for use. They can come and go through my kitchen, come and go through my backyard, do whatever they want to do. It's just to provide them for conveniences up here.
Okay.
As far as the dimensions of the, uh, to answer the questions for the square footage, this, this area here, I gave measurements on it.
Should we give the size of the lot?
Yeah, I gave, I went to tax recessors office and they gave me that in from, well, the size of the lot was the whole.
The whole.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, yeah.
That's the, but the Swan Pond is just a whole.
Whole thing.
I don't, I don't, that's what it is. And the actual size of this area and the changes made, I gave diagrams for that. You should have those in the package that show what I was gonna do, what it was going from. Here's a diagram that showed.
Yeah, proposed.
There it is. There it is, okay. So yeah, before, this is the, this is the storage room, computer room. And I'm changing that to add a, a small sink here, refrigerator and a small stove here for a small kitchen area. That's the proposed.
I'm not sure if we can grant a in-law apartment to a condo.
Yeah, is there anything with the homeowners association, the condo association?
Well, they're worried about, uh.
Do you have a letter from them?
Uh, I'm here representing the condominium association, so possibly I could clear up why the butter list is so big and.
Yeah, could you just identify?
Uh, I can give you my card, actually. My name is Cage John from the Furrow Marcus Re.gov, I'm Ern Brooks. Um, and so, yes, we, I'm here to just kind of actually get a little clarity on other plans, make sure that they comply with the governing documents of the condominium. Um, so in terms of, I mean, the plans were a little confusing. I had to mash them up with actual pictures of, uh, Mr. Doherty's unit. And there's various rules that the condominium documents do have. Um, I don't want to get back into the discussion that you previously had about what's a private cause of action, what's within the purview of this zoning board. But, um, I'm here for just informational purposes to see whether things are compliant with the condominium documents. I mean, I'm sure the condominium association will pursue whatever rights it has and enforce its own rules. Whether or not they're in the purview of this board, that I don't want to provide any clarity for you. I'm sure you guys know what your jurisdiction is with the application before you. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have otherwise.
So is there prohibition? Is there a prohibition in a condo?
Single family dwelling. Well, what I'm aware of is on the condominium, you can maybe tell that you're also that they're worried about having these, um, overnight stays, bed and breakfast type, what they call those, Airbnb's.
Airbnb.
They want to stop all of that, and so they came out with a, a communication about one year minimum lease.
Yes.
For stays on your units. If you're gonna have the people come and stay with you, they want to have a one year minimum type of lease agreement.
Regular lease.
So I, I can provide some clarity on that. So the, the unit owners that came into the condominium, they purchased a condominium unit in a condominium community, which were single family homes. The last thing that any particular unit would want, a unit owner would want is that they bought into an, uh, an association community that is for single family homes where people are then suddenly using extra space, converting them into a second separate unit. And then leasing that separately, making these effectively multi-family homes. Um, beyond that, uh, exterior changes, um, cannot be made to any of the units, um, and no particular unit owner has any right to do so. That being said, we're not, the condominium association, this particular condominium doesn't prohibit, say, roommates. So a roommate would have access to your entire unit. It's not a separate unit that you're creating within your unit that you own.
He is proposing some exterior changes.
And the condominium association would definitely be seeking court order if that, if that happens.
For what? Can I understand what the, what the issue is now?
Uh, any issue, you can, the, we can have this discussion later, but, uh, the condominium documents clearly have a architectural integrity provision in which no unit owner can make any changes to the exterior of their unit.
No exterior changes have been made. It's all been interior. It's exterior, existing, anything that was done to the building other than, uh.
Says new dormer, is that?
But the dormer that I already got approval with the, with the, um, with the condominium already for.
That's already in place.
Yes, so that was already in place.
And that's, that's that two by three.
Yeah.
Accent in your, in your application plan that I saw.
Yes, but everything else is pre-existing. It's all pre-existing, just being changed to different use. So it's reusing the same space I have, except now just adding this one, which was a storage room, it's called a kitchen area in, for my, for, uh.
When did you get approval for the dormer?
What's that?
When did you get approval for the dormer?
Oh, it was like three years ago, four years ago. This is well before the.
Okay. Cause it says proposed, that's why I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, sorry, yeah, that's already been done.
Yeah, okay.
And you're asking me it's, and it's an in-law.
Because that's what I guess it requires to have, to have, I guess, to have more than one kitchen in a home.
Yes.
You have to have this special condition.
That's for an in-law, not just.
For an in-law, yes. I, my relative, my niece and nephew stay, like I, I come from a large family. They're only out of states too. I'd be glad that, I have a big, it's a big home. They can come and stay as long as, you know, that's my idea, but the issue is just, um, little more privacy for them versus coming down and having your storage food in the kitchen stuff. It's easier to have a small little kitchenette for them. When they come, it's easier. I didn't know it'd be such a big thing to have that there. Probably would, you should've left it alone, but I just love the more convenience, so.
So from the condominium association's perspective, it was labeled or described as an in-law apartment, and I'm sure all of you have dealt with this in your personal life. But it raises a few red flags when you're putting in a quote unquote traditional in-law apartment in the traditional definition on the second story of a building, doesn't, without an elevator or any sort of means of access, that would be traditionally associated with an in-law apartment. Which is why the condominium association is involved in this application process.
But they have full access to the building, uh, Michelle living room downstairs. It's, the only separation is just a bedroom and, and bathroom. I live downstairs with my bedroom and office and bathroom. There's a common, uh, living room. They can use the patio back outside. It's not, it's gonna be a single family home. It's just gonna be, um, naked looking.
I don't know, I mean, I guess, uh, I can sense from the discussion that there's not necessarily, you're not on the same page in terms of what the condominium would allow.
Not what.
Wouldn't, and I don't know that we can really weigh into the middle of all that. Well, and there's also some provisions that I think that you identified that, uh, we would struggle with a little bit.
Right, we, we struggle with the fact that it's, we need to have your, your lot size and.
I don't know how to give you that because I could measure my perimeter of my, but it's not, my, when my house sits in the yard around it, but that's not.
It's because it's not a single family dwelling.
It's.
So what, how is it classified if it's not a single family dwelling?
A condominium. It says the existing single family home.
I think it would make sense if the condominium association was the named applicant on this. Because his, his property interest is confined to the bounds of his unit. Everything beyond that is commonly owned. So he is, he has a proportional ownership in, along with every other condominium owner of the entire lot. That's not some individual unit owner's unit. So, that's where sort of the property interests kind of blend, but also are separate.
Okay, so, um, what, what I'm looking right here in the bylaw, it says, it's a separate dwelling unit located in a single family dwelling and.
This is an attached.
This is not a single family dwelling. It is a, is it a?
It's a single family home, but it's attached by the garage to another single family home.
Yeah.
There's one single family unit.
So.
One single family house.
Yeah, that's.
That's how they allow against more houses to be built, they attach by the garage.
Well, yeah, they're not single family.
They're not single family.
No, it's two single family homes that are attached by the garage.
I think a duplex or three plaques or four plaques.
So, um, clearly there's concerns with the homeowners association and that's who you're representing.
Yeah, the condominium trust, yes.
Uh, condominium trust. You know, I don't think that was the intent when the Town of Wapole originally approved the condominium complex to have, um, apartment, you know, apartments in, inside, uh, these, these units. Inside what?
Of a condo.
Of a condo. So, um, based on the first line, the, it, it's, in the definition, it's, uh, it has to be a, um, a separate dwelling unit located in a single family dwelling. And I think.
It's a condo.
So I think.
It's not a condominium, but there are condominium units on the, on the Swan Ponds that actually condominium apartments attached to each other. This is a home section of the, of the complex, right?
There's no distinction in the law. You, you live in a condominium.
Oh.
You're governed by one eighty-three A.
So whether it's apartments or it's a home, it's still a condominium.
It's a condominium. You're a unit owner and, and a community.
So I guess there's no rule in the town bylaws for condominiums?
Well, this is the definition of.
Well, they have a permit for the whole thing. Some apartments, some rentals, some condos, you know.
Okay, and so for the, I guess for the fair use of my property, why can't I have this, have other relatives stay with me in my property, which is plenty big for.
You can't, you can't without a kitchen.
I just can't have a kitchen area upstairs to allow that without the condominium's approval?
No.
No.
Get a microwave.
No, without, with, not without their approval.
Okay.
Uh, that's a separate issue. We don't speak for the condominium association.
If I get the condominium to, to agree that that's acceptable, would that be something to come back?
No, no, I don't think. I, I, I'm having a, the, the bylaw says a single family dwelling, and Bob's actually looking up the exact definition of dwelling.
So there's, there's a definition of dwelling, one family, uh, detached building containing one dwelling.
Right.
Uh, the definition of dwelling unit includes a unit in a condominium, but I think by that definition, one family.
It is a one family home.
But it's attached.
But it has to be a detached building.
It has to be a freestanding single home.
So the fact that it's attached to, by the garage.
And it's a condo.
And it's fully separately used by, as a single family, still.
But it's a condo by definition. It's a condo.
I just, it just seems odd.
Now, uh, there's also another provision that says there's only one in-law unit allowed per lot. Which would mean no other unit in that whole complex could do the same thing that you're doing.
If you consider it the whole one lot.
We do.
We do, that's.
That's.
When we ask for your square footage, that's.
It says that's one whole lot.
That's right.
Uh, I, I don't think, I don't think there's any way we can, we could grant, grant this, so, um.
I agree.
Does anybody have anything else?
I agree.
Yeah, unfortunately I don't see anything from the zoning perspective. You obviously have your condo issues to work out, but, um, you know, unless, unless there's something that you can provide, uh, uh, a continued hearing, I don't know that there's anything right before us now that we could.
I don't think.
What, what did the building inspector say?
The building inspector, I talked to him about, he said, as long as you meet all the requirements, which is that the amount of space being used for this in-law apartment is less than, I think, thirty percent, all, you meet all those requirements, you, it should be approved. The only point, the only difference, I think, was the lot size thing. If you consider my lot as a normal house type of lot, it, it would qualify. And you have this condominium. And you have this condominium lot, it's odd. He says, I don't know, but you qualify for everything else, but that's your, that's, that's his...
Yeah.
And you're also asking for a special permit, so that makes it so that the zoning board does not have to, you know, does not have to grant it. It's requesting a special permit. And I think that there's been some concerns raised by the condominium association.
And under your own standards of harmony for the surrounding neighborhood, whether or not it's harmonious with the existing use of the neighborhood, that I think that's something that should be considered as well for the, for this board.
Yeah.
So, um, unless there's something else that you'd want to add, I, I think that the zoning board is not...
Withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah. One option would be, what Suzanne just said is it's called withdraw without prejudice, where you request to withdraw, but that allows you to come back within, within two years. If we vote it down, you can't come back.
I'd like to withdraw and talk to condominium people to make an understanding of this, to see if there's something we can work out.
Doesn't require to withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, yeah. Withdraw without prejudice, you can come back tomorrow if you want to.
Okay, let's do that, let's do that, so I can...
You're okay, you can talk with them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think this is just to start the dialogue and make sure our interests are also protected.
And you may have more in the future, so...
Well, no. We just saw there's only one in-law apartment per the definition.
Oh, so you have done, okay.
One and done.
One and done.
Yeah.
So if you think about that as a worst case, if it were something you'd consider to accept, just the one, you wouldn't have it throughout the whole complex. You'd have just the one.
That'd be a problem.
But that's a problem.
The bylaw, the bylaw citation for that, what the bylaw number is that said one in-law apartment per lot.
Yes. The whole lot.
Five B two.
Five B two? Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's right in there, five B.
C oh seven.
Five B two.
Five B two.
Yeah, it's the definition of that.
Thank you very much.
And it's, uh...
It's up on, it's up on the website.
Number, yeah, C seven.
You can just read the whole section.
No, no, but it's, it's not high, it's not high.
It's on my client side.
Okay, so, um, first off...
I don't know that this is gonna be anything, even if the condo association, even if they were to approve it.
But at least it's safe to just withdraw without prejudice and it can just...
But, but just, just...
It's not as simple as you originally thought.
No.
No, unfortunately.
I mean, we generally haven't come across this before because, you know, people have this area above, it's a two-floor unit. So, you know, they make a bonus room or like a TV room for their kids. We haven't, this, our association hasn't come across this. And frankly, my firm, we represent quite a few condominium associations around England and we really haven't come across this issue as well, so it's just something we need to work out.
Mine, mine only thought was, given the fossil, the condominium says it's okay. It's not, it's not okay with the zoning, yeah.
Right, right. So that's, you're, you're exactly right.
She is making a point.
Okay, so, um, what I would recommend is, do you want, do you want to close this hearing and then we can...
I want to do what she recommended, withdraw without, that was the term.
Without prejudice. Okay, so the first thing we have to do is you're gonna close this hearing. So we'll, we're gonna first vote to close the hearing. And this is just to close the hearing and then what we'll do is, uh, is a correct vote to make a motion to...
Allow.
Too loud.
With, right.
The applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice.
Mm-hmm. Do that separate from closing the hearing.
Yeah.
So close the hearing and then, okay, okay. At the applicant's request, can, uh, would somebody make a motion to close the hearing?
I do.
Okay, closed by Jane. Uh, maybe, motion made by Jane, second by Suzanne. This is just to close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carry. Next, um, would, could I have a motion to, uh, have the zoning board allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice? Case number, mm, ten dash nineteen. Okay, moved by Jane.
Second.
Okay, second by Suzanne. And this is to, uh, uh, this is to allow withdrawal without prejudice. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carry. Okay, so I think you guys should talk and move forward there. But there's clearly, there's, there's big zoning problems on this, so, uh, you know. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Okay, next one. Lincoln Road, and I will be stepping down and, uh, actually, I asked you, Bob, but Suzanne...
No, no, you can do it, feel free.
Suzanne's the vice chair, you can go step.
Step it up.
Do you have a, do you have a card or something?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, let's do that.
Now you know, you should. All right, our next hearing is...
I'm stepping down.
Malou, one, am I saying it correctly? One three seven Lincoln Road. It's a special, it's case number eleven nineteen. It's a special permit. Under section five B two, the zoning bylaws to allow an in-law suite within the footprint of the existing house. Who's coming up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, thank you for hearing this tonight. Um, I'm Mike Ozil, I own Hillcrest Builders. I've been contractors doing the work, representing my clients. Uh, my clients are looking to add, uh, an in-law within their existing finished space. Um, uh, their mother, mother-in-law recently sold a two-family home that she was living in by herself and is trying to be more involved with the family, close to the family. She is hoping to stay with them, uh, but she would also like to have a one kitchen space. Um, so the proposal is to alter the existing finished space, which is a portion of the basement. And that would be her bedroom, living area and kitchen area and the bathroom as well.
All in the basement?
Uh, half of the basement.
Half.
Yeah, that complies with the, um, the square foot requirements. Um, I think they're allowed eight hundred and ninety square feet and they're only asking for eight hundred and eight. It's, it's written there on the...
It's on this plan?
It's on the plan, yeah, in the bottom right corner, I believe, of the coverage.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, they are under their requirement, um, oh, and, uh, you know, they, they have one mean, one entrance, one means of egress and, um, you know, it meets all the requirements. And we're just here seeking a special permit.
Now, the, this first picture is the first floor?
Uh, the first picture is, um...
No, the lower level.
This is lower level, okay.
A one, right?
Yes, yeah, A one is the lower level, A two is the existing second floor.
A two is the existing second floor?
This is a raised ranch, right?
Correct, yep.
Yeah. What's, where the den and the utility are, is that finished now?
That is finished, yes.
We need pictures of the house. Picture?
Pictures of the house.
It's a raised.
What?
It's a raised.
Raised ranch? So we, I just make, need to make sure the egresses, you know, are compliant with...
Correct, so it was a raised ranch.
No, that's the wrong one.
And at some point, uh, they put an addition on the, where the garages were, they finished that space previously, previous owners. Then they added on an addition on the left side of the garage. That's the den area, that's specified in the plans there now.
So there's no garage anymore?
There's no garage anymore, no. Uh, the driveway, uh, is, is more than adequate for more than four parking spaces, um...
Yeah, good, thanks. Oh, okay. Yeah. All right, so the garage was over there and that's known by the house. Do you want to see this by? Thank you.
The garage wasn't in the center.
Oh, the garage was the middle, I thought it was...
Yeah, where the drive was, and maybe that's where the drive was.
What's specified as a den is an addition that was done, I'm not sure exactly when, but by the previous...
It's a piecemeal house, huh?
Is that it? That's a one-story addition, just below a level?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. If you want, see, did you guys see?
No, I, I saw it. Yeah. Thanks.
And that, so that one, that den area is an addition at, um, on grade as well. Um, so it actually, the den area to the bedroom and bathroom area, there's a few steps going down to... Cause it's a, it's a split.
Yeah.
And the den, that has the egress from the front and back, that's, um, that's at grade.
All right, so this is gonna be egress here. Okay. Egress here. Do you have this? I just took yours, that's why, I think you don't know. I couldn't remind you. Oh, here it is, John's got all sorts of stuff here, that's what...
It's in the files, if John can't set it.
That's right, I had to steal James.
And I was wondering what happened to him.
All right, now we, we have comments and stuff.
You had a mixed up, isn't the kitchen the, the lower level one story?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
The kitchen and living area.
Yeah.
It's, it's the, that's at grade. This steps down into the, the lower level of the raised ranch.
You would, yeah. Yeah.
So this is technically the entrance here to the in-law. Coming down the stairs, this is the entrance, from the interior space, I'm saying. So this is, this is in-law space here.
So the whole basement is just...
No.
Just...
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay, good, thanks.
I do have some comments here I should probably read in, I just found in the folder.
Yes.
Uh, ConCon has no issues.
This is the in-law.
Our, our town engineer, um, reference has been made to an undated plan entitled Malou Residence by Simmons Studio Architects, dated for the above noted site, and the following comments are made. Section five B two C one states that minimum lot size shall be fifteen square feet. No information regarding lot size. Lot size has been provided.
Fifteen thousand square.
It's a fifteen thousand square foot lot?
Well, that, I assume that's what they...
Is there a plot plan?
No.
No.
We need a plot plan.
Wait, I got some. I just found the folder, sorry about this. All right, let's see what we got here. Let's find square footage. Rick probably reads these really fast.
We don't have a, this is the assessors' information.
Yeah, but that might have square footage, you know?
That should have a lot.
Of the lot?
Yeah. Yeah. That's all I have, I think. You don't reference, reference, it's not on the plan.
Uh, the lot, I don't, I don't think so.
It's a pretty big lot. Is it on there?
No. Ten acre.
Ten acre? All right, so good on that.
Just under an acre.
Yeah, twenty-nine two, I believe.
Yeah, it's a big lot when I look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over twenty thousand square.
Yeah, yeah.
The applicant should also discuss with the board, how many vehicles will be parking at the residence in order to show compliance with section five B two C ten? And you just said four?
So currently the driveway is, is two spaces wide and forty feet long. So the, there's more than adequate space or two tandem, partly could fit four cars in there according to the regulated requirements for parking.
Okay.
We, we really should have a plot plan.
Yeah.
So that we know that the existing building conforms to the bylaw.
Okay.
I mean, even if it doesn't, but it's okay, though, we need to know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, you know, write just a plot plan from a survey.
Yeah, so that's already in process because of, as a part of this, they're adding a bedroom. So, uh, we're gonna be redoing the whole septic system. So John Glossar, who's here, I guess, uh, already did his practice last week.
Okay, you can get a plot plan.
So, yeah, he has already surveyed the lot, I believe, so he needs to do it for his systematic license.
Yes, right, yeah. We need a copy.
And will the new figures be reflected on here when you add the room? You'll have to add the square footage.
For what?
For the...
New bedroom?
Yeah.
Is that included?
Oh, no, so we're not adding a bedroom, we're changing a living area to a bedroom. And because we're doing that, we're doing the septic system.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you said you were adding a bedroom.
Oh, we're adding a bedroom.
I thought it was like an addition type, sorry, I'm not sorry.
Confusing.
Yeah, we're adding bedroom.
This is the piecemeal house of Lincoln Road, huh?
It's all internal, it's a house with a den.
All right, and I have the wall poll PD and they have no concerns, sewer and water has no concerns. And border health, uh, no specific concerns. They're doing, uh, other than the conclusion of soil testing and determination of the number of bedrooms, the newly proposed septic system. You getting a new septic?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So that's all I have for the, for those. Plot plan would be good.
Yeah, we need a plan.
Yeah.
Showing the house on the lot.
Okay.
Would you need the septic plan?
Correct, yeah.
So if you can give us that, then...
Okay. And it would be good, I think, since I had to use your phone, to show a picture of the, the entrances and exits.
Okay.
Cause we're, they're supposed to, when you drive by, you're not supposed to know.
Right, so the, the existing structure, the end, the front entrance is already there and existing.
Okay, okay.
Uh, on the rear, we would be adding the patio door. That's proposed on the plans, yeah.
Think of anything else?
Yeah, I think the, just the plot plan there is a requirement that we find that the dimensional requirements comply with bylaw, uh, the existing structure as modified, so.
Okay.
If we could have that, that would...
Yeah.
Okay.
Quickly, is there a doorway being installed, um, from the existing house into the in-law?
Yes, there is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, um, as you come down the basement, there's a, there's a hallway area there.
That separates the in-law from the existing house?
Correct, yeah. So essentially this, well, there'll actually be two doors.
You're the one in the audience, do you want to do anything?
This is es- essentially the entrance to the in-law. And this is the in-law space here.
Because, well, I'll clarify where I'm going with that is that, um, by definition, the in-law is supposed to be an open breezeway between the existing household and the new in-law suite. And so by adding that doorway, you're actually separating it from the existing house.
Okay. All right, that's, I think we put in the door based on the building, building inspector's request.
Yeah, I mean...
There's a comment, okay.
Should be moved from Lincoln Road. There's already a door there separating that room. Uh, when you go, first go downstairs into what's now the living area, the playroom. There's already a door there, uh, that was there when we moved in.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's always been separated.
Out of the house. Yeah, I just think of what we've ruled on in the past as far as doorways separating in-lives and setting a precedent for future projects.
This is a tough one, cause there's something a little weird out of it, so...
Yeah, yeah.
And then, uh, as I mentioned, the reason for these, um, the bedroom actually has two doors. Uh, that's because, uh, it's a ranch, this window doesn't meet egress code. So the bedroom needs to mean there's an egress. So instead of having the windows, second needs to be, second one, and a second door.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, that's probably not a problem. This may be a problem.
Okay.
This one, if you left it open.
Yeah.
This one here, Rick?
Yeah, I did not, that's not a problem.
Yeah, this one here.
Over here?
Yeah. It's, I think, in the past, we've recommended as long as you remove the door and create an open breezeway between the two adjoining properties, it's considered an in-law, it meets the the spec of that. I think we've made that recommendation before on previous hearings, so. Pretty simple fix.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak?
Oh, just two comments. Drew, you're, and Rick, you're exactly correct. The intent is that it cannot be isolated into a separate dwelling, like a separate dwelling unit. So, and that's that's in the bylaw, and that's how the zoning board has addressed this in the past. The other question I have is, what was this space, was this a preschool? What was this used for historically?
So the previous owners, the husband was an artist, and he created the addition that's currently on our home. It's a separate side unit as his artist studio. So it was always a split-level ranch, but he added this separate addition to it later on.
And where the where the garage was, they refinished and it's just.
It's a playroom, and our daughter uses it currently as a playroom.
Did you leave any stuff behind?
Did they? Oh.
Did he leave?
I wish.
Should I?
But, yeah. A couch.
But just a plot plan and and as Drew said, so that it can't can't be isolated into a separate dwelling.
We're trying to keep them from being two-family homes.
Right.
You know, in-law is an in-law.
Yep.
Family.
So we'll continue this?
Yeah.
To the seventeenth, I guess we probably have arrived, Amy?
Yep.
Is everybody all set? Everyone's all set over here?
Just to see if the, at the next hearing, provide the, or before he can submit the plot.
Right, okay, so we'll submit a plot plan, and do we need to submit new plans with that door removed, or can we just make notes, or?
We can probably make a note.
Yeah, I could make notes, okay.
We just conditions.
If you're drawing the plan for something else, take the door off, but.
Okay.
For the bit, if you have to do something for the building.
Now, I'm I'm pretty confident these things start to comply with all setbacks, but if it doesn't, that's not an issue, correct?
It will.
It doesn't look like it's.
It looks like it's fine, but.
That's what the plot plan wants.
Yeah, the plot plan, it looks like it's a pretty centered house on the lot.
I suspect it does.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm just, I'm I'm curious.
Yeah, be pusher for your engineer.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, as Jonah.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Suzanne, if I can, on that, it wouldn't, if it's a non-conforming house, it does not say that you can't have an in-law apartment, that's.
Right.
But, I mean, those would be things that the board would look at, see.
We'd want to know that. Decision. It's non-conforming.
Got it. Okay.
But nothing says it can't be done.
Right.
Reference.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so someone will make a motion for me to continue this?
Motion to continue.
Second.
And everyone's all set?
We'll take time and place.
It will be on July seventeenth at seven. All those in favor continuing? And town hall. Yeah. All those in favor continuing?
Aye. We'll be at the other, the old meeting room, the town hall.
Our regular hall.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right, do we have to do minutes?
Yeah. Way back.
You can blow them off.
Can we?
We can start, we can start.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to, I'll wait for John. You can make the motion to John.
No, we have some minutes to approve.
Thank you. It's like five chapters.
Good night, thanks.
Thanks.
We were trying to push that off, John.
Yeah, we just agreed to blow it off, but you wrote the plan.
So.
We're going to make a motion to not approve the minutes.
So, uh, May twenty-ninth, uh.
Oh, wait, in here.
March twentieth.
March twentieth? I suppose we really should do March.
Yeah, I've gone through them. There was one typo, I think I found, and I, Amy, I'm sure you're correct.
Yeah, but you didn't have ball.
Where, where, which, and what, what's that?
Whatever, one, I sent it to.
Oh, I probably already corrected.
Look what time we got.
Those are the days.
When?
It's thirty.
Thirty, yeah.
On March twentieth, you should note that I stepped down.
Didn't?
For the summit.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Don't forget to mention, John just stepped down.
I, I haven't been there.
Thank you. That's usually neither snagging on that one. Kind of sight. All right, so May twenty-ninth. You'll have to do it again on the next one, huh? On the summit app.
No, that's all done.
She did it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, she did. Got it on that one. Okay, yeah, there it is, right.
I'm okay with all of them.
Yeah.
I've gone through them before. There was one typo that I found, and Amy's correct.
Amy, okay.
Yeah.
I also stepped down to John Turco Drive.
John Turco?
Yeah.
Oh, it says that. I got the April third one, says she did.
Yeah, March twentieth doesn't.
March twentieth.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was done.